The regular meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, Monday, June 9th, 2014. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
President.
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 The Clerk is present.
Yes, ma'am.
A consent agenda. No minutes available. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions: Art Council, Library Services, Waste Water Management Commission. Correspondents receive and file Tiverton Prevention Coalition Newsletter. Rescheduling of the public hearing to July 14th to establish ordinance to reorganize Planning Department pursuant to Charter Section 407, 1 and 6. Kate Micho, Administrative Officer, Distribution of May Activities Report. Town Administrator, Distribution of Department Monthly Reports for May. Counsel, anything to be removed? Okay, seeing done, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, motion carries.
Mr. President? I move that we move item C1 on the agenda to following item 4. What we have now is A7. It's my understanding we do not have an A7, an open public forum. So I move that C1 be moved to that spot.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, motion carries. We'll now go on with the non-advertised licenses. Manuel J. and Deborah Lenares doing business as J. and D. Hot Dogs, 1540 Bogomash Road, request approval of victuering license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Are Lenares here?
Mr. President, he wasn't sure he was going to be able to make it, but we are still, it's going to be subject to all legal requirements, so we're still waiting for a appearance. If you, if you go to get something, you're right.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the licensing request for the victular license for Manuel J. and Deborah LaHare's DBA J. and D. Hot Dogs, 1540 Bogomash Road.
Subject to meeting all legal requirements.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, motion carries. Okay, we will begin with the public hearing and public presentations. First, a presentation from the Historical Cemetery Commission's annual report.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
I'm just going to give a little short presentation of the Historical Cemeteries Commission. My name is Robert Martin, and with me tonight is Jim Spears. We're both co-chairs on the commission. I don't know if you've received this, but we did submit back in March the paperwork. Just to give you an idea of our mission, it is to supervise the many small cemeteries, the family cemeteries located in the town of Tiverton in accordance with the charter. As a reminder, the historic cemeteries, normally some of them have veterans in them, and we try to maintain that flags are placed on those cemeteries as required. There are more than 80 cemeteries in town, and they are here, there, and everywhere as you've seen them as you pass by. There are several cemeteries that do not fall under our purview, and I'll just list them here, they being Pecassett, the Hillside Cemetery, the Lake Road Cemetery, and the Pleasant View Cemetery. Those cemeteries, the Pecassett is maintained by the Cemetery Commission in town. The other ones are normally under separate management, and they're normally private cemeteries. I'm going to list some of the activities that we accomplished in 2013. We've had two new people on our group, David Bell and Carrie Bailey, and we are now up to five members. That's the requirement for the minimum by charter. And one of our members was interested in getting on the Rhode Island Advisory Committee for Historical Cemeteries, and that's been a nice assist because then we're filled in on a lot of the information that comes forward out of the state. The, as far as the maintenance, what we try to do with our budget is maintain four cemeteries in town. Two of them are on Main Road, one is, and two of them are on Crandall. At one time, we were maintaining cemeteries on Stafford Road, but because of our budget cutback a few years back, that's no longer possible. One of the big things we did last year was we had requests from National Grid that came through Town Hall to monitor the operations, some of the cemeteries that they were doing to remove trees because of storm problems that they had had in the past, and I believe there were either three or four cemeteries involved, but one of them was really bad. There were two huge maples taken down, and we were there to protect the stones and to ensure that the stone walls were not damaged. Pardon me. Jim will take over here on the public outreach and give you an idea of where we're headed here, and if you have questions, I'm sure we can answer them at the end.
Good evening. I'm Jim Spears, and as Bob indicated, I'm one of the two co-chair. We have a fairly active public outreach program. One of the things that we do, and Isabel Hart is the primary person of that, and that's assisting members of the public with genealogical research. At random intervals, we get requests from people who are chasing down, you know, ancestors, and Isabel is probably our local expert at, you know, who's buried where for this sort of research. We also have a program that Isabel is working on, and that's researching all of the 80-odd cemeteries to the best of our ability in terms of ownership, who's buried in them, documenting the stones as they exist today. She's quite an artist. We have many beautiful headstones in our cemeteries dating back to the early 1800s and late 1700s, and she's trying to document those so that we'll have a record, a permanent record, because all of these stones in time will fade and disappear. We have a cemetery called the Hamley Family Cemetery, number 41. It's above the intersection of Souza Road and Main Road, and the Hamley family has contributed some amount of money to help us maintain the cemetery. It's one of these, a cemetery in Tiverton will deteriorate rapidly. Stuff will grow in a hurry, and if you don't keep after them, they will effectively disappear. And as Bob indicated, for Memorial Day, we do plant flags on veterans' graves. We're not the only entity in town that's doing that. There are several other organizations that are also doing flags for veterans. In our pending actions, one of the more interesting cemeteries that we have is in the Heritage Park Mobile Home Community. And if you look at it now, it's basically a mound that's about, oh, the size of a van, average van, and there are the remains, it is the remains of a colonial cemetery as near as we can tell, and we've had the state archaeologist looking at it. And there's no record whatsoever of the cemetery. The land on which it stands has been tremendously modified, and we're working with the people who live there to keep the cemetery from fading away. We also have a goal of having an adopt-a-cemetery. Many of these cemeteries are in the middle of somebody's yard, because in the old days, in the 1800s, the cemetery was in the middle of a farm. Over years, the farm was broken up, and today, in 2014, there are cemeteries that sit in somebody's front yard. The cemetery may physically not belong to the landowner, and it may belong to the descendants of the family that the cemetery holds. So what we're interested in doing is establishing this adopt-a-cemetery where we would hope that people who own land on which a cemetery is present would take it upon themselves to mow the grass, cut back the weeds, and we would help them to the extent possible. There's always questions of, you know, who would be liable in case someone were to be hurt in one of these, and we're working on researching that kind of question. And with that, if there are questions, I'll be, we'll be happy to try to answer.
Any questions from the council?
I just have a really quick question. So, thank you to both of you for preparing this. Aside from the adopt-a-cemetery program that kind of you outlined here, I mean, are there other ways for folks in town to get involved to help maintain this important piece of our past?
Certainly. Anyone who is interested in wielding a weed whacker, a pair of clippers, a pair of loppers, if they contact any of us, we, we have, as Bob indicated, we have two local landscapers that we keep four cemeteries well-maintained. There are a bunch of other cemeteries that, depending on our own personal time and energy, you know, we work on. These are mostly ones that are along the traveled roads. The ones that are back in the woods are, they tend to get ignored. But that said, if someone is interested in helping, we are out working on cemeteries often enough that we would be more than happy to put people to work. And if someone wants to work on their own time, we can give them guidelines as to, you know, what you can do, what you can't do, what the best way to work around a 19th century or an 18th century headstone would be.
And if folks were interested, they could probably get in touch with you via the Clerk's office or Town Hall somewhere? Okay, great.
And just one, one comment. Please extend our congratulations to David Bell for his appointment to the Rhode Island Advisory Commission on Historical Cemeteries. Great job.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we will now begin the public hearing. Public hearing on zoning map amendment and zoning ordinance text amendments to implement Form-Based Code zoning Bliss Corners and North Main Road and general changes to the use table for commercial uses. Kate Micho and Ken Buckland.
My name is Ken Buckland. I'm a principal with the Cecil Group, planning and design firm that's done the major part of the work on the Form-Based Code for the town. Our team includes the firm of Union Studios Architects and a, out of Providence, and Fitzgerald and Halliday Incorporated, also out of Rhode Island. The project was funded by federal funds and through the distribution from statewide planning. Zoning can be a problem if you, to try to understand, and typically what happens is the zoning code can be almost like a foreign language to a lot of people. And one of the things that we try to do with Form-Based Codes is to get them to, to an understanding for people to know what kind of development is going to occur with the zoning, and so that not only the owner of the land, but also the neighbors can also understand what kind of development can take place. Our particular intent for this particular project was to try to create attractive commercial districts without being onerous with regulations, because too often Form-Based Codes can be too restrictive and too much process within the regulations, so it's too difficult to get through the, the process to get your entitlements. And so what we're trying to do is create something that also is, has clear set of standards and is a manageable permitting process so that the, the projects can proceed as, can proceed appropriately. And with that, the idea that you create by investment, creating a more attractive location, you're encouraging customers, you're encouraging tourists to come to the locations in the commercial centers, because what we're talking about is commercial areas. Now, this isn't exactly a true Form-Based Code as, as in the, the classic style of the zoning concept. This is what's called a hybrid code, because what we had to do was figure out what worked within the zoning regulations and what needed to be changed. And so it's a combination of amendments that are being proposed within this. The process included an online survey, several public workshops, and a number of drafts and revisions to the, to the regulations. The amendments are centered on Article 4, Section 19, changes to the official zoning map, and in the description, I, in terms of reading the official announcement of it, this is just a description of the, of the elements. There are also, within this, recommendations for amendments or update in the comprehensive community plan to include the infrastructure pieces in the, in this, in this concept. The reason being that the, the roads that we are talking about, that within the zoning districts, are state-managed, state-owned roads. And so the, the town has more limited capability of affecting change within those, those roads. But if you put the, this information into the comp plan, into your comprehensive community plan, then that information can be used to encourage the investment by, by state infrastructure funds for the improvements of the, of the roads. The areas we are talking about are the, we're looking at were the general commercial districts on Main Road and on Stafford Road in Bliss Four Corners. This particular graphic shows, the colors indicate the different types of land uses on, within the district. That red line that extends down along Main Road is what the existing general commercial district is. And if you notice, you can see, it's, it's pretty much parallels to the right-of-way. So what it means is it cuts through properties, it cuts through lots, so that a lot of lots have, have both residential zoning or some other zoning and the general commercial zoning district. So part of this was the idea of thinking about, how do we make it easier to understand zoning, not only for the property owners, but the neighbors? And so we, we proposed in this, in this change in the zoning map to line up with the, with the lot lines, and you'll see that. The next slide shows the Bliss Four Corners, existing general commercial district. The, the, the blue area on the lower left is the library, which is under, under construction at this time. The, the blue area in the upper left on the, on the pond is the former school that has been sold to private, for private development. In the, in the next slide, we show what the existing general commercial district encourages by the dimensional standards in the, of the, of the regulations. And it requires a minimum setback, so it encourages the buildings to be set back and parking to be put in front, which isn't bad in terms of business to be attracting customers to know that there, there's parking, but aren't necessarily the most attractive types of, of development in all cases, in all locations, along Main Road and along Stafford and Bliss Four Corners. So in looking at the zoning, we, we decided that there were three subareas, three different, distinctly different areas that could be zoned in more appropriately to fit with the kind of development that's there, plus what we want to encourage as, as development in the, in the, in the, in the future. And those three districts that were proposed were the traditional Main Street, which is what you might think of as that typical New England kind of configuration where the, the buildings are up behind the sidewalk, the, the, the buildings abut each other in many cases, in most cases, and there is a, a scale that you might think of in terms of typical New England. The second district was the neighborhood business, and this was a lower density transitional area. The idea that there is, there, we'd want to trade a character that's a little bit more residential in nature, that fits with the neighborhood surrounding the, the commercial district, and would, it would, would it still allow for a commercial development, but would be, would have a more residential character. And the third was a pedestrian-friendly district. We, we know what our commercial strip malls look like. What we want is something that's a little bit more friendly for the pedestrian and the bicyclist. We don't necessarily want to change, radically change the, the commercial district development, but have something that encourages development, that, that makes the pedestrian feel more comfortable, that makes the bicyclist feel more comfortable, so you can get a whole, a whole different kind of, of movement through the area. And that's one of the things we found, is that there are a lot of people walking in, in these districts. A lot of people walking on Main Road, on the new sidewalks that were put in just a few years back by the state, and a lot of people walking between businesses in some of these districts. And so what we want to do is, is within the regulations, encourage that clustering of, of commercial development that supports the walking and biking. So in the next slide, we'll look at, we'll start to walk through our, where we put these sub-districts. And for the traditional Main Street district, the, the location was that northern end of, of Main Road, from Canonicus up to the state line, and the, the orange area in that district shows what we talk about as, as a traditional Main Street sub-district. The image that's shown here gives you the idea, I think you probably are very familiar with it, but the buildings being, being very close together, touching, a lot of cases, parking behind the buildings already, some parking on the, on the street as part of that, of that, of that development, and that's where that area looks, looks to be most appropriate for this traditional Main Street district. Our, our, our lot diagram is, is one where instead of a minimum setback of, on the, on the street there, right-of-way, there's, there's a maximum setback, so that it pushes the building up, encourages the parking behind, encourages the, the linking of parking behind the buildings that, that get, so there's more efficient parking and provides the, the, but provides that space in, in the, in the rear of the property for buffer and connection to, to other right-of-ways. The, the idea of not necessarily requiring that the, the building be, be at a zero setback line, but there could be some variation, there could be a little bit of a setback, 10 feet, to allow some activity outside within the, the front of the building as part of that, of that district. For the infrastructure piece of this, we looked at the idea of putting the, the parking on Main Road. However, the, the Fitzgerald and Halliday, our engineer, had found that there was a limitation on the width of the right-of-way. So our, our concept is to have two travel lanes and one parking lane that would, that would vary from one side of the, the street to the other within this, this district. This would be the element that's improved by the state or with the state's approval for, for the use of funds on the road, on Main Road. Our next district is the neighborhood business district, which is actually in two areas on, on Main Road. And our first area goes from Canonicus down to Russell Drive as a, as a location. Now, within this district, as you see, the lines, again, follow the, the rear of the property boundaries to, to be consistent with, with what the, the properties are, that are there, with the exception of those properties that are larger than, than 10 acres in size that are already committed to some institutional use or, the cemetery being one of the option, one of the uses on the, on Main Road, that would be, that would not have the line extended beyond. I wanted to point out as well that in that area, in the middle of this section, the, the line follows Main Road directly and does, and is taken away from the, the properties to the, the eastern side, and this is an area of Cypress, Spruce, the, the, the area where the, the road is much further below the, the residential development, so there's a significant grade change coming down to the road. There is no connection between the, no physical connection between the properties and, and Main, and Main Road, and so the, the, there's no particular reason to have the, the commercial development connected in that, in that area, because there is no commercial development. Our, the, the, the look of the area is more separated buildings, maybe multi-story, but, but with spaces available around, around those, those buildings for the purpose of parking and activities, so that the idea that there could be conversions of buildings to commercial, residential buildings to commercial, or new construction, and new construction, we'd want to make it look like similar to the character of the development that, that is already there. Our next neighborhood business district area is further down between Grandview Avenue and, and Rocky Avenue, and again, the same, the same criteria apply where the, the zoning boundary line is, is moved to the rear of the, of the, of the, of the, of the lots that are fronting on, on Main Road. Our illustration here again shows that the, although there are commercial properties, that the, the separation of buildings and the, the landscaping creates something that looks a little bit different as, as a, as a, as a plan of development, very different from that traditional Main Street kind of concept. And our, our diagram tries, and this is, this is the, it shows the setbacks, the location of parking, the location of driveways, that are, would be permitted under the dimensional standards of the, of the, of the regulation if it is to be adopted. This would be consistent with a neighbor, residential neighborhood, where we want the parking to be on, on each lot. The infrastructure piece in north, on, on Main Road in this, in these sections would be one with a median, so it restricts movement in the left turns except in, in those locations where the, the median is broken open, and, and that would allow for, for a safer crossing of pedestrians through that, that area. Our third district is our pedestrian-friendly destination, and we called it pedestrian-friendly destination for two reasons. One, we want it to be significant enough as a commercial district to attract people to the location. And secondly, we wanted it to be designed so that it would be, encourage walking between the businesses and between properties and along, along north, along, along Main Road to make it more comfortable. And our, and our areas for, for the pedestrian-friendly destination district extend from the area you may be familiar with, Tom's Market, down to the, to the Rite Aid, and from, from Old Main down to the southern extent of Souza Road, which is where the existing general commercial district is located. In terms of development, there is already significant in recent development. We don't necessarily see significant change, but there will be some change of Rite Aid being one of the options that, that could be a, a, a near-term redevelopment project. And so what we've, we've encouraged with the, with the design of the standard, the design standards, is one where the, the landscaping and the, and the setbacks the setbacks along the street encourage and make it comfortable to walk in front of these commercial areas, and also lead you in and allow the connections through the parking areas and driveway areas into the property. The idea was to, in terms of infrastructure, and, again, this is the state road, was to make it, allow for turning movements, but to keep the traffic slow enough so pedestrians would feel comfortable and safe in the area, within this commercial area, so that we have a center turn lane that would be split in some areas to allow the pedestrian crossings. Our last general commercial district, as pointed out, was the Bliss Four Corners, and there are two different types of development areas here. There are the residential, the church institutional uses, as they're called, and the commercial corner at Stafford and Bulgar Marsh intersection. And, again, just to remind you, that kind of development is encouraged by the general commercial zoning district, and what we've proposed for Bliss Four Corners is a pedestrian-friendly district, again, as a single district extending to the property lines, not including the library, in this case, as a district that would be for commercial purposes, for the most part, and would allow those lots to be fully developed in the way that the pedestrian-friendly district encourages, allows for parking in front, but also encourages the buildings to be moved up, and as in the design standards, requires the pedestrian links and the connections. One of the pieces that had come out at the time that we were working on this last year was a roundabout by the state. And in looking at that, Fitzgerald and Halliday, the engineers, had spent some time thinking about how you actually make a roundabout pedestrian-friendly. And so if there are roundabouts here, if there's a roundabout here, or in any other location within Tiverton, what they've done is they've come up with the design standards, the design criteria that should apply to make it comfortable for pedestrians to walk around roundabouts, because typically what happens is people don't stop, and so it makes it a little bit more dangerous for that conflict between cars and pedestrians. So that was the purpose for doing that. One of the other elements that was recommended was, in this document, was the idea of creating gateways, so that there's an identity that's defined at the intersection with the idea of signage or some variation in the streetscape to make it clear that you're at the center of Bliss Four Corners. So those are the zoning map amendments that are being proposed. There is also changes being suggested in the district use table. What we found is that we wouldn't necessarily look at the use table in a form-based code, because you're looking at the character of development and you're going with what's available. However, we found there were so many problems in the use district table that it made it confusing as to what was allowed as a use within there, and that just makes it more difficult to go through the permitting process. So within the use table, there are a number of changes being made. Many of these are to conform with state law, and in the case of retail, to be a little bit more specific about what are the different types of retail, because in the use table, what had been done is that they tried to list out all the uses that sort of fit different categories, and try to make determinations as to what was the most appropriate for a special permit or an asset right development. And so what we've done is say, take away that and just put it in by size. A 15,000-square-foot building and a 40,000-square-foot building, or anything over, are the kind of, the character of development that you're looking at, not necessarily the use itself that comes along with the district table. So those are some of the changes that are made into the district use table. There is also a piece on the accessory uses, and what we found was that the building commissioner was having trouble trying to get interpretations of what was detrimental, determination, detrimentality, or impairment. And so what we've done is added a definition, so that it's easier to handle some of those decisions in terms of the process in the district, in the uses that are defined within the regulations. In addition to the use table is our design guidelines, and these are the categories that the design guidelines are put in the regulations, proposed amendments. The illustrations that are used are photographic and drawings to describe the character. There's information on key points as to, the ideas, it provides information as to how you would go about creating the kind of character that we're talking about, to make it more user-friendly as a tool for getting better quality development. There is also some specific design sections that talk about things like parking and building location, and the relationship between those. This is a summary of what the amendments are, as the document itself is available to the community and has been available for that purpose. I'd like to thank the planning board and Kate, the administrator, for their help during this process, and for all you who came to the workshops and participated with the online survey as part of that process. So thank you very much. This concludes my introduction.
Ken, before you leave. Some issues have been brought up, and I just want to know if you would address some of them?
Sure.
The letter we received from Pauline and John Neary regarding the zoning map amendment changes to move neighborhood business up to the property lines in some areas?
Correct, and I am familiar with that. In this particular case, it's the idea that what we've done is taken those split lots with the zoning district and put the lot lines consistent and concurrent with the zoning district boundary. And they would like to have that line remain where it is, so there's a little bit more of a buffer to their properties. However, under Article III, Section IV of the zoning ordinance, the building commissioner is allowed to modify the district boundary by 50 feet, so that this hard and fast line is not hard and fast within a subdivided, a split lot. If it's on the property boundary, it will always be on the property boundary, one way or another, they'll know what can be developed. But, in fact, they could see that commercial development, even with that lot line splitting the property line where it is. So maybe not helpful to what they want to accomplish, but it's probably more consistent with an idea that you have, you know what you're going to get if the zoning line is at the concurrent with the lot line.
Also, a question was raised regarding, I guess, historic use of a property, where a property has been general commercial, say, for almost forever, and under the new zoning, some of that may change. How would that affect, you know, businesses and properties?
As a pre-existing use, it doesn't change. The only time that this applies is when the development occurs, that somebody comes in and asks for a change of use, a change of development. And in that case, these regulations would apply. Essentially, what happens under the zoning regulations in the state of Rhode Island is, if you have some existing use, you're protected under, as a continuation of that use, for as long as it's not abandoned.
This being a public hearing, we will now hear from the public. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Joseph Arceusa, 49 Hancock Street. I have to admit, I haven't read through everything, but I went to the public hearings and heard a couple of presentations. Starting off with the design standards, as it plays into the type of buildings that they're looking to have built. It says to discourage flat roofs, single-story, that was on page 27, just briefly. The majority of development that comes into town builds that type of a building, and there's a reason they do that, so that they can put the mechanical, the compressors and the different things up on the roof, enable to encase them with some sort of wall, so that the neighbors behind don't hear them. That's pretty standard in design for buildings now. You can put a roof above, you know, it's just sort of a, but you still have a flat roof below, and then you put sort of a facade above, but you're talking about putting developers into a lot of money when they're just trying to open up a small store. So, you know, to tell somebody, Napa, for instance, has a standard building, it's a metal building, it's a standard blue, they got their lettering and things like that. Napa could never come to town and build a building and open up a parts store in the north end of town, because, one, the corporate wouldn't build a building in a town that doesn't fit there. 7-Elevens like that, too, they have their standard building. And, I mean, they'll work with a town, but to a certain point, it has to resemble the type of building that I'll see around the country. McDonald's the same way, you can see McDonald's five miles away. So, just on that. All right, in the code, when they're talking about the Main Street, Tiverton Main Street, they're talking about buildings being right up, you know, the buildings right up on the roadway. Well, anybody who's been over in the north end during a snowstorm sees big trucks come down the road, and the first thing they do is throw all the snow up against the building and cover the entire sidewalk. And as the snow continues, builds up, builds up, and the store owner's throwing it back in the street, and that's kind of why architects and designers decided, you know, it's better to put the building back away, that way you can have a storage area across the front. You know, you have to think about, we're not in North Carolina, where, you know, Mayberry down there, these beautiful buildings, and we have to deal with conditions up here. So when you're talking about a store owner that's going to have to hire heavy equipment to remove snow, and I've done this in Newport, down Lower Thane, we had to take the snow out, and it costs the store owners a lot of money. Fortunately, they do enough volume and sales down there to be able to afford the store owners, you know, get enough rent to pay for all this. We don't have that in the north end of town. We have small, little consignment shops and stuff. How are they going to afford a $700 snow removal bill every time it snows? So we've got to think about the stores and the people that are going to come to Tiverton. These designs are great, but telling these store owners, like I said, how they can build and what their building should look like, and, you know, what type of signage, we have to be a little more flexible in our code to attract business in town. I noticed that the signage, the portion on the signage was looking a little better, it seems, you know, up in those districts. All right, in the use chart, you'll go through and you'll see each district will have...
Two more minutes, Mr. Susa.
I'm just noticing the number of not permitted and special use permits. It's like numerous special use permits, special use permit required for all these different businesses. The last thing I just wanted to know is if any research was done, and Ed, you had touched on this, every time we change the zoning, we create a pre-existing, non-conforming use. So if we're telling these businesses that could have built a business, the type of business, then we change the zoning, and they're restricted to what, if somebody wants, if they want to sell that property, we further restricted what can go on it. And it goes back to the use table, where I was talking about all the non-things that you're not allowed to build in these districts. So I hope that this council will look very closely at what we're, you know, restricting and what we're changing here. These people that own these properties have a right currently to put up this type of a building, where it's an affordable block building with a flat roof, and they put a nice front, and they have parking in the front. This seems to take that right away from them.
With these changes that's going to go on, a lot I recently purchased for an indoor recreation, it changes from indoor recreation permitted to I need a special use permit. My project has already started. Am I going to be, if you guys decide to vote this thing in, am I going to be held to this, this new thing, or am I going to be held to what you guys already approved for me?
We're going to listen to everything first and then figure out what, I'm sorry, we're going to listen to everything first, Mr. LeBeau, so we get the full hearing. Then I'm sure Mr. Buckland will address existing, pre-existing, already started, that types of things. And then I'm sure Mr. Tights will weigh in on that also.
But that didn't answer my question.
I can't answer your question until I hear all the parts.
Will I have an answer tonight on this question?
If we decide tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President and council members. John Paglirini, 67, William Barton Drive. I am a land use attorney, I have a master's degree in community planning, and I demolished the Ranger School. My concern is the vision. I expressed several concerns at the charrette. Councilman Lambert was in my group. We talked about several things. One of the questions I had was Bliss Four Corners is not a vacant lot, and you want to make it a pedestrian-friendly environment. We have three-foot sidewalks with telephone poles and fire hydrants in the middle of them. My question at that time was, what was the investment the town is going to make in the sidewalks? How are we going to make this a pedestrian-friendly? Is one property to build a five-foot-wide sidewalk as proposed here? Are we going to do it as a comprehensive sidewalk system, all the same material? We're going to have cobblestone bricks, asphalt, concrete? What's our vision of the Bliss Four Corners pedestrian area was my concern then, and I don't know that it's been addressed here. It is a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood that's proposed for the Bliss Four Corner area. I can legally put in gas stations, automotive repair shops, vehicle rental agencies, car washes, storage of boats and marine. I can put in open lot storage of mulch, auto sales, truck sales, trailer sales, commercial off-street parking for school buses and vehicles. I don't understand how the use table conforms with the vision of being pedestrian-friendly. There are going to be certain things that you're going to have to say no to. Do you want to have a pedestrian-friendly area so you can walk to a car lot? Maybe they belong in the Neighborhood Business District, but they might not belong in there. You somehow, as a town council, need to incentivize people to sell their residential home or their building and have it demolished in order to conform with what is being proposed before you here. What incentive has the town proposed to make that happen? It's a matter of economics, and there are things that need to be done. The limitation that we're having with the development on the Ranger site right now is not addressed here. You're changing the maximum impervious area from 50% to 70%. Conceptually, that sounds wonderful, but the entire Ranger side, the easterly side of Stafford Road, is in an overlay district for the watershed, which maximizes development... of Stafford Road is in an overlay district for the watershed, which maximizes development at 10% impervious. So if you have an 80,000 square foot lot, you're allowed to put 8,000 square feet of impervious, which would mean your roof line, your parking, your walkways. You need to address that overlay district, because moving it from 50 to 70% actually harms my parcel, because you're dropping the maximum height from 50 to 35. The best alternative I have is to go up, but now I can't, because you're dropping the height 15 feet. And if you want me to meet the 812 pitch that the design standards have, it becomes problematic. One of the other questions I have that I think needs to be clarified is, as Ken presented, your retail, you're rolling into less than 15,000, less than 40,000. I think we, before it becomes a question, you need to say, is that the footprint? Is that the total building? Is it 15,000 square feet on the first floor and 15,000 feet on the second floor? Does that trigger 30,000, or does that trigger 15,000? Is residential on the first, on the second floor count towards that square footage or not? And then for Solicitor Tights, Rhode Island General Law, 452437, Andy, has the zone buster community residence. You cannot prohibit a community residence in any zone, as is being proposed on page eight, if residential is allowed in that zone. So because apartment buildings are allowed in the TMS and the PFD, you cannot say no to community residence as I read that statute. Thank you.
Anyone else? Give it to Nancy.
My name is Mark Demello, 1041 Old Stafford Road. I just had a quick handout. I own the Subway Plaza. I'm in the process of buying 15,000 square feet of land behind the building. And then, once they develop the property in that area right there, there's two more lots that would be in the general commercial area, which I really wanted to buy. The, I want to do like some sort of village setup of small buildings we can walk to. Individual, fancy. And, you know, roughly spending a million and a half to $2 million in the year 2015 to 2017, to create a little village concept. By doing what they're doing now, following the lot lines, it would take that opportunity away. And I kind of show that with the, where on the left-hand side of the paper, where I put I want to buy to create a village-style general commercial area. The, so, A, if you guys don't do it, I still have a chance to back out, so I guess it wouldn't be a big deal, but I thought it'd be, you know, living in Tiverton all my life, being a fourth generation, I think it would match the area really nice. What they don't show in this friendly district is the gas easement that cuts through the property and the, on both sides, and then the church land, the size of the land. I'm under the, somebody was telling me from the church that's in a trust, that can't be converted. I think it's a great idea what you guys are looking at to do with the flea market, to convert that. My, I only had a suggestion, and I'll sit down at that point, was if you went to the one more parcel to the right, which I have nothing to do with, but being a resident all my life, I think it would make it really nice, creating that little downtown area, would be the next parcel down to the east, because it hits all the back of the properties all the way through. Now, that's the one where, you can see it behind the church area, right above Indian Hill, Indian Hill Road. So, that's where I'm with that. Whatever you can do to help, I appreciate it, thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Buckland, which, could you address some of these?
Starting with the roof line and the one-story buildings. In the design standards for, for the pedestrian-friendly district, the idea is if you have a low building, we want a raised roof, and if you have a higher building, you can have a flat roof. It's based on the dimension of the, of the building and the impact onto the, onto the One of the things that you could do is still modify that roof to accommodate an HVAC, the system on the rooftop, and that's, and that's often done as well. We don't, we don't, we didn't necessarily play to the corporate standards of commercial development by groups like McDonald's, the national retailers and food interests, and Burger King and Wendy's and whatever else that comes along. More the idea, we're trying to create something that it looks, looks and feels like Tiverton and has as a, as a unique standard, rather than, rather than just a corporate anywhere The traditional Main Street, there was the point about snow removal, and I agree that snow removal is a problem, but it's a problem that's been dealt with for hundreds of years in, in New England. It's something we, we live with as a, as a way to, to deal with, with the kind of climate that we have around here. That's not to say it isn't an issue, and in fact, what we have is an allowance for not requiring a zero setback, but having a variance of up to 10 feet in the front, in the front yard, to give some extra room in the front if necessary. There was the, the question on the use chart as to special permits. There are uses that are not allowed, there are special permit uses, there are permitted uses, and those, those vary to the district. We spent some time on thinking those through. If there's a, a specific problem with, with one of them, of course, there's always the chance if, and in any case, in any of these cases, of if something comes forward that you see as, as a reasonable development project that makes a lot of sense to the town, the zoning is not immutable, it's not cast in stone, you can modify it again if you, if you want, for a project that makes, that makes a lot of sense, and is, and is kind of quality project that you want. So that, that is one of the options you have available. What, the, there was a question on, there was a point about the town's goals and investment in the sidewalks, and it goes to the right-of-way as well, too, the improvements to the travel way. And that is something that has to be done in coordination with the state. What we were recommending is the design concept that was put forward in, in the Form-Based Code in our, in our process, be included in the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive community plan as an element, and that can be discussed. The comprehensive community plan is under discussion at this, at this time. There are two public meetings, one on Wednesday night, one on, on Saturday during the day for public input and comment to the comp plan that can be used for that purpose. There was a, the point about the, the design standards as to how they apply with other overlay districts. We did not, we did not consider the, the overlay district for Stafford Pond as, as part of the, as part of the analysis that we did. This was strictly for the zoning district, replace the general commercial district that underlies that, that, that overlay district and that, that area. And in terms of the calculation of square feet, the 15,000 and 40,000 are gross leasable area, which means that it's one story or two stories or three stories, or however many square feet of area is committed to commercial use is calculated as part of that, that, that area calculation. So we, we think that there is, there is a measurement that has to be taken, and it's something that the, the building commissioner is to be responsible for, for reviewing, but it is possible to have that as, as, as part of the, of the planning process and the project delivery and permitting process.
Anyone else from the public?
Joe Susa, 49 Hancock Street. Have we calculated how many businesses will be affected by this zoning change? That will become, that were, that were uses at this time that were considered to be legal, and now, once we pass this, they'll become pre-existing non-conforming uses? How many businesses?
Hi, Kate Micho. I'm the Planning Board's administrative officer. I'm also a resident of North Tiverton, and I live right near the state line off of Main Road, and I had the pleasure of working on this project. And we did indeed look at the existing businesses very closely. We went out, walked up and down the street, spoke to business owners, and spent a lot of time looking at this use table. One of the things we did try to do was to eliminate some of the special use permits in order to take some of the uncertainty out of the permitting process, because we heard from business owners that the special use process was not helpful to them. Property owners in particular were looking for tenants to fill their businesses, their, their properties, and if you've been in North Tiverton, you know that there are plenty of buildings that do need tenants. And they could not take the gamble that a special use permit could be denied, and that business would not be allowed to locate in that building. So what we tried to do is to say, yes, it's a permitted use, or no, it's not a permitted use, and to take that uncertainty out of the process. Certainly, there could be more special use permits, but we did not think that that would be helpful to the property owners and would not encourage the reinvestment that these owners want to make in the area, but that they can't justify without a definite answer as to whether or not something is going to be allowed to exist within that building. So certainly, there were, there was a lot of, of time and effort put into that particular issue, and there was a lot of time and effort put into minimizing the amount of existing pre-existing non-conforming uses, and to bring more of the existing businesses into conformity with regard to the use table, and specifically with regard to that district line, to eliminate a lot of these existing structures that are split by the zone line currently. For example, the old Brooks Building, most of that building is currently within the residential district. Under the current proposal, that building would return to the commercial district as it historically was used. So I guess that would be my answer, is that I don't have a count as to how many businesses would become pre-existing non-conforming, but certainly the effort was made to make the businesses more conforming, and to help the businesses and the property owners to develop and to continue to exist in this community. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Peter Monis, Captain Circle, Tiverton. I just want to make up the point that on Bliss Far Corners, there's a overlaying situation of the Stafford Pond. So you have a watershed district there, so we've got to comply to that, too. So it's not an easy, you know, step to go and develop that area, and, because we've got to also consider the watershed. We just can't use the commercial area and do anything we want in that area, and even residential is somewhat restricted now, too. So, please keep that in mind when you deliberate this ordinance. I think it's very good, and, but you just can't put anything in the Bliss Far Corners, especially on the, the western, the western side of Stafford Road. We got the watershed overlay district there.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? Third and final time, anyone from the public? Okay, the public portion is now closed. Mr. Buckland, I have some questions. Mr. Demello brought up over at, in Bliss, you know, the possibility of expanding property that he already owns by purchasing more, which is behind it. How would that affect this proposed zoning?
As I said, the, the way I think you should approach this is that if there's a development project that makes sense, come back and revisit the zoning and the zoning district boundaries as appropriate. The, as to whether or not there can be a, a change for the district boundaries is something that Attorney Tights may be more appropriate to answer.
Mr. Tights?
Yes, the mic doesn't stretch that far on the other end, and I thought with the setting, it'd be better if I stood up here. I think Mr. Buckland has set forth a good thing from a policy point of view, that see what the development proposal is in the future, and if that's something, it can be amended in the future. From a legal point of view, unfortunately, even if you wanted to extend it, you can't, because it hasn't been advertised. The boundaries of the zone change have been advertised, and the 400 feet out with, from those boundaries by certified mail. So while you could shrink it and eliminate parcels from the proposed zone change... So I'm very happy to see this going along and to see that we're going to make it a livable community for the people that want to settle here and have been here for years or want to move in. I hear about all the state, all the problems we have and we're losing population. Well, I want you all to know that Tiverton grew in population. Newport lost people, Middletown did, Portsmouth stayed the same. Tiverton grew by 550 people, one of the only communities in the state. It's an amazing town. People want to come here, people want to live here. We have good schools, we have fabulous recreation. I was late, I just went to a baseball game someplace else. They didn't have dugouts, they didn't have a concession stand. My nieces and nephews going, what are we going to do? Tiverton gives so much to the people in every way and they try with the senior center and every single thing through the budget process. This council worked so hard, I was there, I'm not getting off track because that's what we're all about. We try to give everyone what they need and give these people that are trying to settle here or expand here a good opportunity and I thank you for all what you're doing.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? Third and final time, anyone from the public? Okay, the public portion is now closed. Mr. Buckman, I have some questions. Mr. DeMello brought up over at, in Bliss, you know, the possibility of expanding property that he already owns by purchasing more, which is behind it. How would that affect this proposed zoning?
As I said, the way I think you should approach this is that if there's a development project that makes sense, come back and revisit the zoning and the zoning district boundaries as appropriate. The, as to whether or not there can be a change for the district boundaries is something that Attorney Tights may be more appropriate to answer.
Mr. Tights?
Yes. The mic doesn't stretch that far on the other end and I thought with the setting, I'd be better if I stood up here. I think Mr. Buckman has set forth a good thing from a policy point of view that, see what the development proposal is in the future and if that's something, it can be amended in the future. From a legal point of view, unfortunately, even if you wanted to extend it, you can't because it hasn't been advertised. The boundaries of the zone change have been advertised and the 400 feet out from those boundaries by certified mail. So while you could shrink it and eliminate parcels from the proposed zone change, you cannot add anything new that wasn't already received notice. You couldn't do that at this point. That would have to be a separate change. The other question I think that, perhaps it was the only other question I think that wasn't addressed was Mr. LeBeau's question. And I just want to say that, I mean, the question of whether a use is vested, which is a legal term when someone has proceeded far enough in reliance upon the existing zoning, is an individual determination based on a number of factors for individual property in each situation. So I can't really comment on it at this point and I can't provide him advice, that's for his attorney to provide. And it would depend on where he is in the situation and not something that we can opine on tonight. Any other questions while I'm up here from the council?
If I could just add one thing, if there is a certain district, and Mr. Tights can correct me if I'm incorrect, but if there is an area where you don't feel that the new zoning is entirely appropriate, then you could shrink the district that's being proposed and the underlying district would apply. So in that instance, where you're looking at Mr. DeMello's property, if you were to shrink back the pedestrian friendly district, then the underlying general commercial district is what would stay in existence, unless I'm incorrect. Okay, that's how I understand it.
I mean, are we, I mean, is that how granular we need to be this evening in terms of looking at this?
No, but if you want to, you can. I also do want to, while I'm here, suggest two things. One is, I think Mr. Paglirini is correct about the community residences should be in allowable use. The state law does require that they be allowed as of right in any district that allows residences. And just overall too, I would recommend, given the scope of this, that you, rather than vote tonight without a prepared motion, and I think the idea was to see what you want, and obviously none of you spoken yet as council members, but I would suggest and recommend the procedure of continuing the public hearing to one of the next two meetings that the council has on the 23rd or the 30th for preparation of a resolution. And you could reopen the public hearing and take the vote on it at that time. We'd have a draft resolution for you, obviously based on your feedback here tonight.
Anything from the council?
I just have a couple.
Just clarification, is that okay? Yeah.
If I understood it correctly, Kate was saying it's still going to be 300 feet from the center of the street back?
It could be.
Because right now, if it was voted on tonight on the west side and it still just stood the same, wouldn't have to re-advertize it, I'm fine with that. You know, basically, it would be no, have to re-mail out the whole thing again, the whole process. And it would be nice to have it voted through tonight or on your next meeting, so you're not, so some developer don't have to come through and do the whole process again, because that's not business friendly. You know, it'd be nice to have it where it's done that way and it could be done with the possibilities and have a nice future to that.
Well, I, again, I'm not sure, but just looking at the proposed zone and that extra portion, it falls outside that. And as Mr. Tights said, we can shrink it, but we can't expand it.
Right now, it's to the outside. I want to go, I'm just saying, let it right where it is.
It's right there, right?
Right.
That's, that's.
I think right now, it's right here. This is where they want to bring it to. I'm just saying, let it stay where it is.
No, but I'm saying, but right now, we cannot expand it unless we shrink this whole side.
Right.
And say, okay, we're going to not change it.
But you guys didn't take a vote tonight, I couldn't say that way.
Well, if we don't take a vote, nothing changes right now.
I don't understand the issue.
No, I don't either.
It's in the zone now.
It's in there now.
That small sliver?
Yep.
This guy is in general commercial.
Right now, here's the buffer from here to here, all the way across, the 300 feet all the way across. So this is basically 8,000 square feet east to. You bring it in. I'm just asking to leave where it is. I'm not asking to expand it, I'm just saying, leave where it is.
He just repeated what he was.
Do we have an existing that is large enough that my eyes can see?
I'm not sure.
That'd be great.
Jason, you better.
Move this way, Jack.
Oh, yeah. And I'm an municipal building.
Oh, okay.
So this is the area you're talking about, that gray area here that is within the GC zoning boundary, whereas the proposal is to bring it back to that lawn and not include that gray area.
Because they went to the property line.
Correct.
All right. Anything from the council?
Hang on, hang on a second.
Want to use my?
Use both of them.
Stereo, phonic here. So my question is, I suppose, if this zoning amendment were adopted, that parcel would stay in the general commercial district and the parcels with frontage on Stafford Road would be in the neighborhood, I'm sorry, the pedestrian friendly, pedestrian friendly, whatever it's called, I'm sorry.
What's that destination? What is, what is, why is that a problem? I'm trying to understand this.
That's dated commercial.
And you can use this one.
I was under the impression that they were taking away that general commercial from the 300-foot setback and following the, what I was told, it followed all the property lines. So.
Yeah, so what, if I'm not mistaken, this portion will revert to general commercial?
If you choose.
If you choose.
And that is a problem why, I'm asking.
As long as, if you choose to keep it general commercial, I'm fine.
There's no choice of keeping it general commercial, it's by default. If we eliminate, if we eliminate it from the zone and change the zone, it goes back to the zone.
Right, the way we had proposed.
It can't be nothing, it can't be in a.
Right, and the way it was advertised, that strip would go to R-60 with the rest of the residential parcel that it's part of. That's the way it was advertised.
That's the issue.
So, but what you could do is you could shrink that proposed district and then you, the GC would go back, you know, that small gray area that we saw would be GC. And if he merged that into his parcel, then the part of the zoning ordinance where split lots, the zoning district can move 50 feet for a lot that's bisected by a zoning district. If he did administrative subdivision and merged those two lots, then that pedestrian friendly district would automatically bump 50 feet further. So basically, he would end up with what he was asking for anyway.
Okay.
I'm glad somebody understood that, because I'm still confused.
Well, it's still a moving target, but we'll get there.
Yes, okay. Anyone else from the council?
I just have a couple of questions, then I just want to clarify something that I think I heard is that the new zoning and the design specs really only apply when something is developed and/or redeveloped on a parcel, right? So something that's there right now, hypothetically, we pass this tonight, tomorrow doesn't mean everyone's got to, you know, start digging in and changing. It's only when the parcel is developed and/or redeveloped, correct? Okay. Now, Andy, I appreciate the legal kind of proceeding in terms of vesting and whether something is to a certain point or not. My question is, is there any sort of, I guess, legal precedent above and beyond that that kind of sets some guidelines or best practices for how to handle a situation such as this? And I'm talking specifically of Mr. LeBeau's project.
Mr. Tights? Oh, sorry, you're right here. I'm looking down the table thinking you're, I'm sorry. So you take us out of our element and we're totally lost.
Sorry, yeah, yes, that's right. And I just felt too alone back there, even with Nancy and Matt to keep me company. To answer your question, no, this is a policy decision of yours. It's a separate legal decision, which is really not your issue, how far along he is. It's a policy decision of yours, just as the question with Mr. DeMello, do you want to pull this back out and leave it in the general commercial? It's the same thing with Mr. LeBeau, what do you want to do about it? The further question of if you do it and it does become a different zone, neighborhood business and would otherwise require a special use permit, that's a separate thing that's really not before you tonight. So it's really what you should look at as your policy decision on, you know, where you do it. That's why you have the public hearings here, so that people have a chance to come up and say, no, you made a mistake with my property, or please don't do this or that. And as I said, other than expanding it beyond what you've notified, you can make these changes to it. You can pull it back or change things on the edges or change the use table elements as well, as we talked about with the community residents.
Thank you.
Mr. Tights, I do have a question. The concepts that I've liked so far, or the key words, the buzzwords, have been words like business friendly and livable. This is what I'd like to make sure, I'd like the average resident of Tiverton or somebody who's got plans for something in Tiverton to be able to say, gee, this is a great idea. It would look great on Main Street or it would look great at the four corners, but it just doesn't quite fit in. The other buzzword I would like some assurance on, my buzzword would be with the others that I've mentioned, common sense. Is there a way or a process of making sure from a legal viewpoint that we have enough common sense in this planning concept that's being put together that we're really going to be able to address these issues? I remember what north, the north end of Tiverton looked like 50 years ago. And in all honesty, it hasn't changed much in 50 years. I would have one approach if I knew, gee, this is the plan that's going to go into effect next year or next week or next month or 10 years from now. I don't believe that that's going to happen. I think things will come in in dribs and drabs, you'll have a basic concept that people can use, but when all, and that's going to drag out for years if not decades. But what you do need are people that have common sense and a plan and a concept that can employ that common sense. That's what I'd like to get some assurance from, that yes, if I look at, if somebody comes to me and says, here's what I'd like to do, and I say, wow, that's absolutely great, let's see if we can get it done as quickly as possible. Is everything in play with the concept that we're putting together and the plan that we're putting together, that we can work with that type of prospect?
Well, now you've done it, you asked me a question about the philosophy of zoning, so I should be able to answer it in the next half hour or so. But let me get to your first thing. The common sense part, the guarantee, no. That's with the seven of you.
The guarantee, I wouldn't expect a guarantee.
But I'm serious. That is where it is, it lies with the seven of you directly and indirectly. It lies with you directly in the sense that you're looking at it and you're seeing, you know, is this the vision you want? Is this, you know what the comprehensive plan is, you've already been involved with that in the past, you're involved with it on an ongoing basis? Is this the vision of what you want to see for these areas of Tiverton as a way to encourage the commercial development and broaden the tax base, you know? Do you think it's going to work? If someone does come up with a better idea, or what one of you thinks is a better idea, you're not procluded from amending the zoning again. There's no limits on it. You can come back in six months or six years and have a new zoning amendment if somebody's got a better idea. The indirect part is with your zoning board, because you appoint them. And hopefully, you're appointing the five members and two alternates with common sense and they look at it and they apply the law. And if it's something that, you know, really does fit in and it's just a small alteration or something like that, but fits in with the theme and the proper meaning of the ordinance and the comprehensive plan, then that's what, you've got your zoning board there for that kind of small relief. So, or likewise, a special use permit, that the zoning board will look at it and say, well, okay, does this fit in with what we are looking for on the overall zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan? So that's, I guess, my answer to you, that it can be changed and you're not locked in stone here and you're the common sense element going forward. Now, just step aside and.
So what you're saying though, Andy, in part, is that it's sort of an evolving vision. If you're looking at it from my viewpoint, I can remember, as I say, remember Tiverton 50 years ago. I can remember when I was going to college, what North Tiverton looked like. And you know in 50 years, it hasn't changed at all. If anything, I hate to say this, I hope I'm not offending anybody, but it might have gotten a little worse, especially in the business section. Maybe that's all due to taxes and God knows what else. But I just, I would like to know that I have a vision of what Tiverton should look like, what we're going, the direction we should be going in. And I think you've hit on the right concept, that is, we're going to have to rely on, it becomes the people. Whether they have that vision and whether they can, they're using common sense in trying to get us moving in the right direction. That's what it comes to.
Let me tell you, I don't think it's so much the vision that's evolving, although the vision will change over time. I think, because in a way, much of what we're doing is actually going back. We're going back to, we saw the traditional New England models there and the buildings close to the street and whatnot. It's actually, we realized those older ways were actually better than the big acres of parking and the stores set a couple of hundred feet back behind all the parking. But I do think you have to establish it. You have to set the goal and say, this is what we want. And maybe it's going to take many years, as commercial buildings have 30 and 40-year life cycles and they get rebuilt and development happens and we go through economic booms and busts. But I think you do have to set that vision and set it as a goal. You have to set the bar somewhat high. And let me give you an example, in the town of Bristol, back in the late 80s, early 90s, comprehensive plan called for, let's have a boardwalk along the water. Let's have a thing so you can walk all the way along the waterfront in Bristol. And did it happen overnight? No. Has it happened yet? Not quite, but it's almost all there. And the last remaining development parcel, the Robin Rudd Mills, which have master plan approval for conversion to residential and mixed use, part of that approval is the last step of that boardwalk, the last link and connecting. So if you set the bar, you set the goal in the beginning, eventually, you have a good chance of getting it. The city of Newport never put that in their comp plan very strongly, never put it in their zoning. The city of Newport has a hodgepodge of little public rights of way where you can get out from one wharf and can't get to the next one until you go all the way back out in the street and up and down. They never put it there as a clear vision and said, as we're developing, we want to see this here. And it didn't happen. So that's why I happen to personally think, you know, and I wasn't the one who drafted it, Mr. Buckman was, the Planning Board and through a lot of input from the public, but based on my experience and knowledge. but based on my experience and knowledge and professional experience as a planner too, I think this is a good vision, a good plan, and I don't think it's too high a bar for Tiverton either. I think it's a good goal to aim for. And it might be 20 years before you see it really realized, but if you don't do it now, if you don't start sometime, you're never going to see it even in that 20 years.
So I think essentially, and I'm trying to follow you, and my own thinking is developing on this, I think at best what I can hope for is that through a comprehensive plan like this, we've removed as many obstacles as possible to people recognizing what their vision is.
Yes.
Is that the way to?
I would agree.
Thank you, Mr. Tights. That was an excellent presentation.
And if I could just add one point, that, you know, sometimes when you look at these things so often, you, it's in your head and you don't say it, and you assume that everyone in the room knows it. The design guidelines that are in this document are guidelines, and they're not regulations. There's a regulatory aspect to the amendment, which is the use table, the dimensional table, and the map. And then there's the design guidelines, which is that vision. And they're meant to be a guide to allow the market and to allow the property owners to take these guidelines and to make them fit their particular needs. And the way that this evolved is, you know, I have worked for the planning board for almost 13 years, and I've seen a number of developers come before the planning board, and a lot of times, they say, "What do you want me to do? Just tell me what you want, and I'm going to do it." And this way, there's a document, and it's a full set of guidelines, and before they even get to the board, we can put this in their hands and say, "This is what the town would really like to see. Adopt it the way you need to for your property and make it work for your business, but this is the vision that we have for the commercial development in these areas of town." And I really honestly, I think that developers will appreciate that honesty, instead of them trying to come up with an idea and then they, maybe some people like it, maybe some people don't, it's very subjective. This way, you have guidelines in place, and everybody knows, everybody's working off the same document. So I just wanted to make that point, that the guidelines are not regulatory, but they are guidelines.
Anyone else from the council?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things to discuss. It came up tonight that one of the goals was to eliminate special use permits. That's correct. Just going over quickly the use table. Just quickly counting how many times an existing permitted use changed to a special use permit was roughly, it creates basically 25 special use permits. And I'm counting each new zone. So if there was one in pedestrian-friendly and in neighborhood business, I counted those both, as being created new special use permit. And if you look at the ones that were already existing special use permit, ones that were changed to a permitted use was 11. So our delta right now is roughly 14 in creating new special use permits. The other ones that did change were actually a not permitted use, and I didn't have time to count all those quickly. This is a basic looking at it over the high level, and probably someone else probably did it a little more in detail than I did. Now, one thing I wanted to also probably talk about was, a while ago, we had this meeting, initially, I thought it was with the planning board? Is that correct?
Yep.
And I believe we discussed at the Blissful Corners possibly extending it out further at that time. Would that be prior to needing re-advertising of increasing the zone?
Yes.
Okay. And I noticed that that still has not, well, I don't see it done in the maps that we have now. So I was just wondering, was there an issue with possibly doing that, extending it out to where, for example, where Old Stafford and Stafford meet, there's a small community center there, and there's also Tiverton Sign Shop, and I think they'll business inside of that. We talked about extending it out to that area, as well as the old Dairy Dip Glenmas building as well, because I believe that's not included in this map now.
I could address that if you'd like. The planning board did discuss that when they had their meeting on this, and they did look specifically at those lots, and they did ask the Cecil Group for an opinion on those lots. And the Cecil Group did not recommend including those lots in this particular district, just because they were separated from the contiguous district that was being reviewed. The Cecil Group specifically looked at lots that are existing as general commercial and not as pre-existing non-conforming residential. But what the planning board had recommended was to do further study on those lots, and perhaps they should be in the general commercial district. So the planning board, actually, just at the last meeting, I distributed maps to them and aerial views and property cards from the assessors' records to them for those specific lots, and they're reviewing those lots at this time. But since they weren't part of the original scope of the project, the planning board did not recommend including them in this project.
But there's something going forward?
Yes, yes, they have, a full packet of information on those properties has been distributed to them for their review and to start discussing those properties.
Is there expected some ETA on a decision possibly?
I would expect it would probably be on the next agenda to start talking about it. The planning board chairman sets the agenda, but it was just at the last meeting that the planning board members received that packet of information to start reviewing.
Okay. And I guess the last thing I just want to bring up is, we've heard people who already have existing properties, and we have really discussed someone who may possibly want to purchase a property that might be available. So let's say someone wants to put a use in, I can't think of a good example right off the top of my head, that's in a zone that has a building available, but it's not permitted going forward if this passes. But they would have to actually purchase that property where it would be permitted, but it may not be the ideal location that they want. So it was brought up that, yeah, we can always change the ordinance and so on and so forth, but as far as I have observed myself, that's taken quite a bit of time to complete that process. And sometimes, time is sensitive, and we've had, I believe we've had some issues where some businesses have just got tired of waiting and just moved on somewhere else. And I like to possibly avoid that type of situation, personally, myself.
I'm going to ask the same question. No. I want to talk a couple of separate things, and one is to tap into some of the points that Jim made about special use permits, and some of them are specific questions about uses that are in the use table. And I'll start with the more wonky and specific uses. There are two uses, I mean, you look through this zoning code and the use table, and the old use table versus the new use table, there are some substantial improvements. And some of that has to do with, the example I'm thinking of is the retail, whereas we used to have very specific uses for retail, grocery, but not specialty foods and that sort of thing. Whereas now, it's just generally retail. But then we have some very, very specific uses. And it just stood out to me that we have two uses, let me find them, one's on page 10, it's letter J, "Other open commercial recreation use." And that's under open recreation uses, it's a special use permit, it's always been a special use permit, the recommendation is that it continue to be a special use permit. I don't know of a definition of other open recreational uses, of open commercial recreational uses. And it just sort of triggered something in my mind, that we have a very subjective category that someone has to make a decision upon, whether it be, and I suppose typically, it would be if it's an as-of-right use that isn't specifically outlined, it would be the zoning official, and if it's a special use permit, the zoning board or review would opine on Are we doing ourselves a disservice having a use like that, that is not specifically defined, that is so broad and open to interpretation and not having a definitive guideline as to what that encompasses? Because I think what that means is, you know, like tennis courts and, I don't know what else.
I don't know what it is.
Off the top of my head, but do you understand what I'm saying, Ken?
Yes, I do. And you're talking about Section 6, which is open recreation uses, as a general category under the use table. And there are very specific numbers of uses, the golf course, a driving range, miniature golf course, a public park, a bathing beach, a commercial swimming pool. With those specific uses, there may be something that works with the outdoor recreational use that has commercial potential that would be appropriate to consider. And so procedurally, what this allows is that the Board of Appeals can take that opportunity to actually look at a specific use and have that opportunity to say as to whether or not it's appropriate for the district and under what conditions it would be permitted. And that would be the special permit use for that particular option.
Okay. I think either that means that it's a use of exclusion, or it's a use we can't quite imagine. Is that possible to, does that make sense?
We can't quite imagine, and we can't list it specifically and say yes or no on it. And so we're given an opportunity for somebody to come in and say, "I have a great use here," whatever it might be.
That one makes sense to me. So we have another one, which is under Section 8. It's D, letter D, it's the indoor commercial, which is the opposite of our outdoor commercial recreation, which is now indoor commercial recreation.
It's on page 11.
Yeah, it's on the following page, under Section 8. So we have special use permits in two of those districts, and an as-of-right permit in one of them, the pedestrian-friendly district. That one doesn't seem to have nearly as much compelling argument for the use of exclusion, because there aren't very many listed. But I think I can imagine what indoor commercial recreation is, because that seems like a blanket. There's not a checklist there. There's not the golf course, the bathing beach, the tennis courts, the driving range, et cetera, that wouldn't fit into that category. There are no categories. It's theaters, taverns, restaurants.
I think the obvious one would be a video game center would be an example of an indoor commercial recreation use.
Well, that's my point, is I think we can all list a bunch of things we think are indoor commercial recreation. And in this instance, we're setting up two districts to be sort of determined, those uses to be determined or opined on by the zoning board of appeals, and one district to be opined on by the zoning official. It seems like we're inconsistent in that approach. And I, for one, would like to understand that a little bit better.
The reason for having it permitted within the pedestrian-friendly destination district was because that was a more intensive commercial use and allows more opportunity, more use potential as a more, the most intensive of the commercial uses. It was set as a special permit for the traditional Main Street and the neighborhood business district, because it was thought that they would not necessarily conform to the use criteria that we were setting as goals for those districts.
Okay. I think we're going to circle back to that one in a minute, because I'm going to collect my thoughts on it a little bit. The other point I wanted to make was about special use permits. I absolutely hate special use permits. I don't know if I've said that before, I'm sure I have. As far as I'm concerned, a special use permit by sort of default really should be compelling. And I don't necessarily understand some of these, and I just maybe need to be informed more by your thought process and the planning board's thought process and what information you found from the public in some of these. It's not going to be too long of a conversation, but we were on page 8 at the bottom with convalescent rest and nursing homes, retirement and assisted living facilities. And almost exclusively across the board, there's special use permits and were special use permits. When I say I think there ought to be a compelling reason why you require a special use permit, I think I understand that a special use permit is a tool used to ensure reasonable protection for the utility and the uses in the neighborhood, and you want to make sure that these uses are cooperative and they work, and it's not a totally outrageous leash that we let uses on. But so that's why I say sort of a rest home, nursing home, retirement residence, assisted living facilities, to me, at least in the natural, we look at the natural landscape, most of those, at least in these smaller districts, would be of relatively small scale and would, at least to me, appear to be not terribly intrusive. So what's the argument for disallowing, well, I say effectively disallowing, I would argue that it discourages a great number of potential developers or potential property owners right off the bat. I mean, it's not a quantifiable number, but it certainly is a deterrent for some people.
An interesting discussion on the philosophy of special permits, and in an aging population, the idea of retirement rest homes as an option within the use table. And the special permit, from my perspective, is used when it's a use that you would accept under certain conditions. There's certain mitigating factors that are necessary to apply to allow that use to be permitted within your community. And so you have that opportunity to actually look at the specifics of the project and make a determination as to how that, or what conditions should be applied, to make sure that it conforms with the direction of the policy and the goals of the town. In the case of the convalescent rest and nursing home and retirement residence, the listing of those uses here, we took it from the basis that the existing use table had it as a special permit use and played off of that. And in fact, you're right, that in a lot of cases, these would fit quite nicely within the area. But they wouldn't necessarily be exactly the right kind of use if you were trying to get a viable commercial center. And that's the key. The activity and the use that you wanted to have played through in those commercial areas, this isn't the only place to put a convalescent home. We're only looking at one part of the use table and one part of the regulations of the town. And there are other locations where these uses could be put in, and so we're looking at a small subset. We're playing off the idea that the existing standard for review within the community is for a special permit, so that in these new districts, we're also looking at special permit.
Okay. So I guess the second, and I buy that, that's a good argument, I like that. But kind of continuing on with that, we have hospital, medical, center, and clinic on page nine. It's right smack in the middle of the page geographically, E, letter E. Those are also special use permits. And if we're talking about sort of mixed-use districts, at least some of these are, and we have the opportunities for both commercial retail service providers on the first floor, residential uses on the second floor, we have a more dense neighborhood in North End, more pedestrian-oriented, fewer cars, less access to public transportation in Tiverton, since we have very limited access to public transportation. One might logically concur that a small medical clinic in the North End isn't totally outrageous to think of, and would be, I think, right at home, I suppose. So--
One of the, the idea of a medical office makes a lot of sense as an option available for the commercial districts. I think one of the considerations was the idea of a hospital. And this goes to, we didn't correct-
I certainly think that. But I think that we're talking, when I look at this table and uses, I don't look at a broad canvas, a blank canvas that is, that are these districts. I look at what is physically possible, what is economically reasonable, and what is likely to happen, just from market dynamics. And I don't believe anybody thinks that putting a hospital on State Avenue is a logical or economically viable or just physically possible endeavor. I think in a world where certainly we have an aging population to think about, we have a lot of motivation towards community-centered medicine. And you see these small community medical centers popping up all over the place. They're small, they're not a hospital, they're not a primary care, they're halfway in between. And they really do serve a very good purpose in society. And I'm not going on about, you know, what we should be doing societally in North Tiverton. But I go back to, I really need to be convinced why we're prohibiting, for all intents and purposes, or causing people to go through additional, oftentimes arduous, whatever you call processes, because we're trying to accomplish something. So I get that, but some of these I don't get. And some of these I think we can do ourselves perfectly a very good service by eliminating some of these special use permits, especially when we have multiple layers of review on these sorts of things. We have, we're talking about taverns on the next two pages or something, where there is not only a special use permit required, but also a license. And, you know, we've got layers of the town government that you really, if you want to use the word hoops that one must jump through, that is an additional hoop. I guess that's all I'm saying. I just think special use permits are, whenever possible, we ought to try to do without them, especially with the way the state of Rhode Island has viewed special use permits and non-conforming uses in the past.
To point out, on page 10, under Section 7, Office Uses B includes professional and general offices. It has examples of real estate insurance and others, et cetera. It is a possibility, and those are permitted uses within all the districts, that it could be that a medical office could fit in that criteria.
I mean, couldn't we just separate it out? I mean, it sounds like a-
Well, I think what's happening is that some of the uses are so specific, you know, that you're looking at it and you're saying, "There's no room." Again, it would have to be by special use, which I think we're trying to get away from. And I think some of these areas, especially when you get into the North Tiverton portion or even in the pedestrian-friendly area, that those type of uses make sense in a heavily congested area where people are going to be drawn to. So if they can go to a walk-in clinic, we're not going to have a hospital in town, but a, you know, a walk-in clinic or some sort of therapy place, those places make sense in those areas. But we're making it as a special permit. And I think that's the thing that I think I'm having issues with.
Me too.
You know, and just to go a little bit further, I mean, we are a waterfront town. And we have a restriction on boat rentals, tours, charter fishing, and similar uses right across the board. Now, if somebody were to come in, in a pedestrian-friendly area, you know, Four Corners area, or even on Main Road, and want to rent kayaks, they're not going to be able to because they're non-permitted use, which to me doesn't make sense in a waterfront community.
I think in that case, one of the considerations was that it was waterfront recreation business. And there is no waterfront in these general commercial districts, although your point is well taken.
Pretty close.
Because of the way-
Yeah, it's pretty close. I mean, it's not like they're going to have to, you know, take a plane.
Yeah. The idea that previously, under the general commercial, it was a no, it was not allowed as a use, these boat rentals. We assume that your decision previously had been that this was specifically for waterfront and not for the general commercial district. But we spent hours on this table, going back and forth on which ones would be special permits and which one would be allowed and which ones would be not allowed. And there are some judgment calls that have been made in here. And you certainly have that opportunity to come back and say, "These choices should be amended in some way."
The other question I had, and it's less of a, well, it's a question because I need you to, I need your expertise. When we talk about uses like, and we're on page 12, gasoline filling stations, including retail sales, and auto and truck sales and repairs, what, I think about that use, and they are not permitted in two of the districts, they are special use permit in the pedestrian-friendly. The question I have is, when you have a use like that, that is not permitted in certain districts, that would either, they're close by or they're in those districts currently, is there typically a motivation to continue to perpetuate that use indefinitely so that you maintain your nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming use status? Is that a market phenomenon that happens? Because you can't replicate the use next door, you continue to utilize it forever?
Absolutely. Especially those that are difficult to cite, such as a gasoline station. That the continuation of those uses is the way that they are maintained as a use within the community. Otherwise, they're forced out in many zoning districts.
So what is the impact then on, so what I'm trying to find, what I'm trying to understand is, in a use like that, where it's, I would say it's sensitive use. It's storage of gasoline, it's repair of vehicles, that these things, you know, over time can, especially gas stations, they have a finite life expectancy before they need to be kind of turned over and rehabbed and the tags been pulled. Does perpetuating nonconforming uses like that, instead of allowing a new site for such a use, does that, would it be better to allow more flexibility for relocating uses like that? Or is it better to maintain the old use as for, I'm thinking mechanically that you continue to have this gas station that was built in the 1930s, and it is the footprint of an old-timey gas station, and it is not going to expand, and you're not going to get, I mean, one of the, I guess, benefits is you're not going to get these enormous gas stations next door with Dunkin' Donuts and a supermarket and a hair salon and whatever else they stick in them nowadays that are three times the footprint. But do we benefit from those nonconforming uses continuing to be nonconforming uses ultimately for-
Ever.
Forever, potentially, because there are no alternatives? Or there are few alternatives?
Of course, the commercial uses exist because of the market that's available to them.
Sure.
I mean, some people complain about a number of gas stations in their commercial areas. Some people complain about the number of banks in their commercial areas. Reason why they are there is because people are coming to that location. It's an easy way to get your gasoline. It's an easy way for you to do your banking, whatever it might be. And so it's, these commercial uses are citing based on the market that's available to them and their success in that particular market. So they will remain so long as that market opportunity is there. Your choice as to whether or not you want to, say, encourage them in some other location, you can zone areas for gas stations, you can zone areas for commercial where it is residential. The question is, where are you going to do that? Have you gone through a process, a public process, to say, "This is where we want our car dealer, all of our car dealerships will be on the same auto mile," you know, how that may be done in other communities, as a way to cluster uses within a certain area? And you can do that. One of the things you can't do by zoning is change the market. You can't force a gas station to come in. You can't force it to leave. The market does that.
Certainly. I think I'm just, I'm sensitive to it because there are uses like a gas station where they can be tricky to cite and tricky to plan for, but are in, I think, a society that is highly reliant on automobile transportation, quite a necessity. And I know just, the market can flip the other way as well. And I guess I'm not saying that there will be a day in Tiverton that we have no gas stations, but it's certainly something we have to think about. Because I'm sure there were plenty of towns and cities that didn't think that they wouldn't have any gas stations, and now they don't. And market forces, while a gas station was a profitable use, there was a higher and better use for that parcel of land, and now you can't buy gasoline in the city of Boston. That's an example. And it sounds like a stupid problem, but it's a problem. And people are trying to figure out what to do about it.
And that's something you can discuss in your comprehensive plan as well. And it's a reasonable expectation that you're going to want some mix of uses that is going to make the livability that much better within the community. And it could include gas stations, or it could include electric vehicles charging stations.
Yeah, right.
And that is your opportunity to identify those uses and to include them as part of your overall sustainable development and quality of life.
And just one last comment. The reason I am asking and trying to talk about this is that I think a lot of people, and I think I, before I had much experience with this kind of conversation, looked at nonconforming uses or making a use nonconforming as a way to try to steer what the future would be of that parcel. And I think it happens sometimes. I think a residential flipping to commercial is one of those things that is a logical trajectory. But on commercial, specific uses sometimes, like we talk about these gas stations, or a specific use that is going to be that use, no matter if you make it a nonconforming use, make it a special use permit, that's going to be or not, you know, eliminate the use entirely from even the lexicon of our text, that use may continue to be there indefinitely. So I don't want us to lose sight of the nonconforming uses that will continue to be part of our community for a long time.
That's correct. I think one of the points being made previously was this idea, one way towns start to approach to try to control the density of development is keep raising the minimum lot size and making a whole series of smaller lots, nonconforming within the district. Philosophically, as a planner, I don't recommend that at all. I think that's inappropriate use of zoning as a way to manage density.
Thank you.
I just have a question for Kate. I know we booked the town, the auditorium here because we expected a lot of people instead of having it at the town hall. Just a question on the certified mail. How many did we send out and how many did we get returned?
I don't have an exact count on the returns. The clerk's office has been handling that. We sent out somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,160 certified notices. So it was everyone within the proposed districts and within 500 feet of the property lands of those proposed districts. I have been going through the returns. Most of them are unclaimed. I don't have an exact count, though, on how many envelopes were, came back.
Any idea, like 25%, 50%?
Maybe Mrs. Mello has, they've been coming to Mrs. Mello's office, so.
They've been coming in. Actually, the process takes a while with the post office. But yes, I'd say we probably have close to 50% in, wouldn't you say? There's stacks of them. I mean, I haven't counted them either, but there's ample return that have been signed and returned. I don't want to say exactly 50% or 40%, but there is stacks of them.
Okay.
And some people have come into the town hall, looked at the maps that Kate had up there, and seemed to be receptive of it and didn't. I think most of the questions that I got or people that came in to me was because they didn't quite understand it, but as soon as they saw the map and the poster she had set up, oh, that was like people from Starwood and stuff, and that whole bit affected there as opposed to just the Main Street area. So we did have a few come in. I don't know how many Kate had come in, but the clerk's office had a few.
Okay. I think from the perspective, we want to be business-friendly in this town. And I think that for the industrial park, it's pretty easy because it's a blank slate. And it has now a streamlined process in place. It's been subdivided. There's been a lot of work on that. And it's easy because it's, there's nothing there. So life is easy. You can have the use table and you can be specific and say, "This is what we want in that park." But when you look at Main Road or Blissful Corners, it's much more difficult because there's already existing uses. There's already buildings there. There's already homes there. It's built out. How many properties are there on Main Road that are not built up? There's one across from Pecassett, Pecassett School. There's the one that Ms. LeBeau is trying to develop. There's a few down at the bottom near Little Bear. There might be a few other ones, but there's not much to build out. Blissful Corners, that's the first I ever heard, with Ms. Mello mentioning the subway area, Subway Plaza. But there isn't that much to build out. It's all existing buildings. So it makes it very difficult to have that vision. There's time that goes by and you have businesses that haven't been, they've been empty for a year. And if they're on an R-30 lot, then they revert to R-30. So they lose their business. That happened, that happens in quite a few places around town where there was a Dairy Queen or Glendale, whatever it was called.
Dairy Dip.
Dairy Dip.
Lenmas.
And it can't be a ice cream place anymore because it's been out of business. And that piece of property is just sitting there, developing weeds. The building is falling apart. And I think it still has potential, it could have had potential as still as a business if it was allowed to, but it wasn't. So, you know, it's a fine line. So, you know, it's a, it's a fine line that you have to draw between, you know, should these things, these non-conforming uses continue? They, they slowly roll away and disappear, and then you're left with property that is not easily redeveloped or rehabbed. And tonight, there's been quite a few concerns that have been brought up. Certainly the Subway Plaza, the indoor recreation, commercial indoor recreation, and then the, the Ranger School. And I think these folks need answers. And in order to proceed with any, any plans that they, they may have, they, they need some certainty. Otherwise, they're just out there hanging. And, and hanging might result in it's not allowed, or they might have to have a special use permit. And we all know the special use permit is, is adjuicous as Brett mentioned, as well as costly. And even if you put all that expense into it to go to the zoning board to have it reviewed, you may get the answer of no, and you've spent hundreds of dollars trying to get a special use permit. And it's not guaranteed. So to me, I, I want to be friendly to business. I want it to make it a little bit easier for them, but I, I know we have roadblocks in the way. And I know Mr. Buckland mentioned that, you know, if the zoning is wrong and an opportunity comes along that we can modify zoning, that that's an option. And I look at that answer and I say, ugh, that's a, that's a wrong answer. Because we know what a business has to go through. Just look at Souza Road and Capriano. In order for them to proceed with a project, they, there has to be comp plan changes, they have to be zoning changes, that they have to jump through hoops in order to accomplish that project. And I personally think that would be an excellent project for the town. It would bring, bring in, it would be a destination and have revenue come into the So again, it's, it's, it's very difficult. I think the, the use table here, I remember at the November meeting with the planning board, I got the impression that this use table would help to make things more conforming. It would help eliminate a lot of the special use permits, that it would be an improvement on, on what was allowed in the, over and above what was allowed in the general commercial district. And I, I did a count and looked at, you have permitted, special, or not, not allowed, and items that went from reduced in usage, rights were taken away versus rights that were expanded upon. In the traditional Main Street, there were 40 changes that took away rights and six were added. For the pedestrian friendly, 12 were taken away and only seven were added. And for the neighborhood district, 31 were taken away and 10 were added. And then there were like these little asterisks with special nodes. There were nine in the traditional Main Street, only two in the pedestrian friendly and four in the, the neighborhood. So that, those little special asterisks means that, oh, there's a little hitch. You gotta look at it a little bit more closely. It may be only allowed in certain cases. So I, I think, I was under the impression that this would improve and, and give more options to the general commercial people and, or properties. And I don't think it does, and at least that, in my estimation of reviewing this. And I think it's, it's true that there's a future plan, and I see a future plan for, for the roadway and having parking, and I think that would be useful, especially in the north end. That might be, except for the snow removal, you might have to not permit the parking during a snowstorm in order to, to plow. But it, it has potential and it, it may help those areas with just changing the lines on the road so that you, my, my biggest problem with getting these sidewalks on certain parts of Main Road was you eliminated any parking on Main Road. At least if there was a dirt and no curb, you could just pull off and, and pull off the, the road. But by putting those sidewalks in and curbstone, you can't do that anymore. So you can't park. So it made it even more difficult for people who have businesses on Main Road to have anybody, they have to have off-street parking. And that, especially in the north end, very north is very difficult. So I think, I think there's a lot of concerns. And I think we just need perhaps to review this, the use table, a little bit more closely against the vision of what, what we need to see in those areas. And I think we need to somehow just get a consensus and, and certainly address the issues that the business owners that have been here tonight have, have raised. Thank you.
Mr. Tights?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to urge the council not to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I want to talk about the use table in particular. First of all, the use table, this is not the comprehensive review of the Tiverton zoning ordinance use table which it needs. There does need to be a real look at all of the uses across all of the zones, a modernization of the uses that you have and a comprehensive look. This was actually a freebie, if you will. As part of the challenge grant, the contract to do the commercial zones allowed for the use of the consultants and therefore their time and the planning board time as they reviewed it, to go through the commercial part of the use table, to at least get a start on it and deal with some of our most egregious problems which have caused problems for a decade or more, such as the asterisk with the shopping centers. So what this allowed was a start on the use table. So I would urge you not to say, we're going to throw all this out because it's not perfect. Of course, it's not perfect. And one of the good examples there was this idea of the hospital and the healthcare centers. Yeah, our existing one lumps hospitals and healthcare centers. It would make sense to split them out and have medical offices effort, but there was trying to make this manageable and understandable and not too much of the changes, enough changes here without doing radical changes to the use table. The other thing is, I think when you're counting them, several of you counted, well, if we changed it, if it was permitted in the general commercial, and, and now two out of the three zones, we made it a special use permit and only permitted in one, saying, well, we took it away twice and gave it one. It's not that. It's two-thirds, one-third. It's taking what's allowed across of it and spread over three separate zones. So to count it in all three columns as three changes is to triple count it and not even counting the changes correctly. So I think, one, you've got to look at it, what you're looking at, that percentage is of the changes. And two, don't reject the whole thing just because it's not where you'd like it to be completely. I would suggest, if you're going to do it, if you have a specific change you want to make, make a motion, want to change this particular thing from this to this. If there's a vote, that's what we have a public hearing, as long as it's done in the course of the public hearing, it can be amended. If you want to say, okay, we think the, the likelihood of hospitals coming in is so slim, we still want to change it now, or we want to strike out the word hospital and make it just medical offices and make that permitted. Make the motion, do it now, make the changes, and/or make the motion to direct it so I can do it as part of a motion for you at the next meeting. But don't reject the whole thing, particularly, you've spent.
Kate, how much money on advertising and notice? Almost $10,000?
No.
Okay.
What did we spend on advertising?
Over $6,000 on advertising and notice. So you don't want to go through that again if you can avoid it. So let's make sure that you adopt the stuff that a majority of you are comfortable with and want to do it. Do it now in this cycle as part of this hearing, even if you have to continue the hearing. But be specific in the changes and keep it moving so you're not wasting that $6,000. Not to mention the money from the challenge grant, including the towns match on the challenge grant.
I personally think that it's a start, but I, I do think that we need to continue this hearing, whether it's to our meeting on the 23rd or the meeting on the 30th. That's a decision we will make. There are a lot of good things in here, but I think, in my opinion, that this whole form-based code was somehow to make it easier for businesses to do business in Tiverton. And when you look, especially on Main Road, when you look up and down Main Road, there are old gas stations, there are old, all sorts of buildings that are empty right now. And whether their permitted uses are still there, I don't know. I mean, obviously, that would be, somebody would have to look at the building and see what they're going to put there. But I think even as a layperson, I find this very confusing in some areas because it really doesn't tell me, if I'm a business person, when I look at something and go, okay, it's permitted, but, or it's not permitted, or it's a special use. But you know that you can still go before the zoning, or eventually maybe the council, and ask for some sort of variance. So I, I, I just think that we need to understand a little more the, the over, the total overview. I mean, all of us know that, that something has to be done regarding the zoning in this town and what areas are for commercial and what areas are for recreational and what areas are for, you know, whatever rather, so we don't have this hodgepodge that we have now, where if you drive down Main Road, you've got everything from residential to, you know, banks to drugstores, to, you know, you name it, we've got it. And so how do you put forth a vision that says, okay, this is what we envisioned, but you've got to look at what's already there? And rather than having to look at every single property and end up with a million special permits, you know, special use permits, I mean, I, I just want to make sure that we look at this in totality and try to make it as easy as possible for someone to come in and do business in town. But the same token, not take away the rights of some people who are already there.
I think one of the ideas of looking at a vision is to go back and look at the idea that we don't, we didn't change the general commercial district as a whole. We thought there are unique aspects to Main Road and to, to Stafford and Bogomarsh. It suggests that the zoning should be more specific to what you think is, is going to be the opportunity for the future of those areas. And that is where the vision comes in. It's not to have a one continuous commercial strip and try to fill it in with whatever uses come along, but give it some direction, give it some thought as to the direction. And that was the purpose for setting up the three sub-districts within the, the general commercial. And within those, there are, yes, there are uses that are special permit, there are uses that are, that are not allowed, there are uses that are permitted as of right, with the thought that each of those areas is unique and different and so has that opportunity. So if somebody, if somebody comes in with a business and says, I want to build X business, well, you're not going to put it in a residential area, you may not put it in one of these sub-areas, but there is a place for it. There is a place and there is a basis for putting a use in. And that was, and that was the thought that went into this, to, to provide something that, that is unique to Tiverton based on the development you've already had in place. And what you want to have for the future.
I just want to say that I, I don't want to give anybody the impression that I, I didn't like or didn't appreciate this document. I think this document is actually very, very wonderful, in fact. I, I think it's, it's a, it's a terrific planning document. It's, it's got a vision, it's got all of the, check all the key words you want. The only concern I have are these, is the special uses. And I just, for some reason, can't get special use permits out of my teeth and, and that's really, and, and I've gone through the list again and whittled it down to about seven that I think are actually really important. And, and if we're going to go the route of continuing the public hearing, then I suppose I'll go home and draft motions for seven of these so we can talk about them, you know, with more depth and detail, if that's the will of the council. But I do think this is a good document, and I think all the hard work you folks put in and, and the input from the public is not lost. It's, it's a good document. I'm just really hypersensitive to special use permits.
And again, I think that's the whole issue, is that when, when we look at things and know what has been businesses in town that may or may not be here anymore. And they probably all were under special permits at one time. So I think those are the types of things that we're trying to get away from, to have it easier to understand that if you're this type of business, I mean, right up front, you have an idea whether or not you're allowed or not. But if you go down and somebody tells you, well, according to the new code, it's not allowed, or it's a special permit, but you drive by and you see an old sign for the same type of business, you know, and you wonder, okay, what changed? You know, if you're not from town and don't, don't know the history. But again, I, I think that's why I would entertain a motion that we continue this public hearing, because I would like the council to put forth their specifics. So at least that way we can, you know, address some of these and maybe expand on them, you know, to maybe clarify some of the, the language. So, you know, we, we know we're not going to have a hospital, but maybe we could, we could have a medical center of some sort. So those types of things to, to clear up the language. So I would entertain a motion to continue this, either to the meeting of the 23rd or the meeting of the 30th.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing to our June 23rd meeting and charge, you know, the council to come prepared to, what's that?
I'd just like to make a comment that Ed will not be here for the 23rd meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
So you may not want to do it.
And when is the next one, the 30th?
30th. I mean, I don't have to be here. I mean, I can call in.
It says at the hotel.
I really think it'd be better on the 30th.
Okay. Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? That you continue the public hearing to the 30th and specify 7:00 PM at Town Hall. But perhaps the council members could come with their written suggestions at the meeting on the 23rd. And if you can get the written suggestions to myself and Kate, then perhaps maybe we could consolidate some of that. You can still have them for the meeting on the 30th if they're not used, but we might be able to consolidate it and have a, like one addendum with several of the things.
If I, if I make a suggestion that we email them to the town clerk.
Okay.
And then that way she can forward them to Kate and yourself.
Is there kind of deadline on approving this for some reason, or?
No, there's not a deadline. You have to continue it to a date certain.
That's fine, but I don't know, I get the impression I'm kind of getting pressured into getting this through. I'm the only person who feels that way.
Well, it's been something that's been a long time coming. I mean, we've needed this for a long time.
We needed it a long time, but I think, but it definitely needs more work on it. And I don't think we should rush it either.
And you can, you can.
I think the next step is definitely to come back with certain motions written out to continue the.
I think we should look at suggestions and not really be prepared to vote on them that night. That's, that's what I'm getting at.
I missed that.
I'm sorry.
So I have no problem getting, coming up with suggestions and probably getting more input from business owners that we haven't heard from tonight. And finding out what, we can get rid of some of the, well, in my opinion, look. we can get rid of some of the, well, in my opinion, looking at the causes of our zoning problems, which we talked about, the non-conforming uses, and how can we at least minimize that continuing? I see that as mostly the root cause of some of the issues we have now, is all the pre-existing or non-conforming uses that we have. If we can find a way to minimize this in these new districts, so it's not a problem going further, I have no problem doing that. I just don't feel like if I, all right, I have the suggestion and we also have to vote on it tonight, why we have to vote on it that night?
I don't think we have to vote on it tonight.
I'm not saying tonight, but like, that meeting or whatever. It'd be good to vet them out and talk about them, and, all right, now, this looks good, let's put it forward and we can get something amended.
Yeah, I mean, my own opinion is that I don't feel as though this has been a rushed process, and I have no problems voting on it. I have, you know, if I didn't, if I weren't a curmudgeon on these special use permits, I would be happy to vote on it tonight, but I don't know what else to say, then I don't think this has been a rushed process. I think we've been talking about this for the better part of two years.
I'm not saying the process is rushed, I'm saying I feel like I'm being rushed to make a decision now. That's what I'm saying.
And understood.
If I'm making you feel that way, I apologize.
I didn't say it was you, Brett.
That is not my intent.
But again, those of us who have been here a while, we have heard issues regarding our zoning in our districts for as long as I've been on this council, and this is a great step forward, so I think we do need to maybe clean it up, fix some wording, and I think we should move on it. But again, I'm still entertaining a motion.
I'll second.
Let me just change it. I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing to the June 30th meeting and ask members of the council to forward suggested edits or other pertinent comments to the town clerk ahead of the June 23rd meeting, so that they can be compiled accordingly ahead of the June 30th meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we will continue this public hearing till June 30th, yes.
When we continue the public hearing, don't we have to state that the venue would be back at the Town Hall?
Yes. The public hearing will be held at the Town Hall at 7:00 PM. Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kate, thank you, Ken, thank you. Hard work. Greatly appreciated. Okay, appointments and resignations. We have the Resignation Historic Preservation Advisory Board, Cynthia P. Allen of 46 Peaceful Way. We have the Juvenile Hearing Board, Cynthia R. Costa of 335 Stone Church Road. Planning Board, David Holmes, 3631 Maiden Road. Tree Commission, Rosemary Tesada, 10 Evans Avenue. Waste Water Management Commission, Peter Andromos, 1506 Mail Road. They have all submitted their resignations. I will entertain a motion that we accept them with regret and ask the town clerk to send them a letter thanking them for their service.
Still moved.
Second. Have a motion and second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, unfinished business, Pauline Richard, request for streetlights installed on Ladue Lane from Winterberry to Teaberry, recommendation from DPW Director and Police Chief Blakey, continued from May 27th.
We did call her today, did Mr. Bellucci, did you get the cost factor? Okay, we called her and told her it would be continued because we didn't have the response to the cost on the lighting.
Okay, does it continue to the 23rd or the 30th?
Well, it depends on when Mr. Bellucci can.
Yeah, I've contacted them three times, twice by email and once by phone, and I just haven't got the estimate to possibly put the street up light.
Do you think you'll have it by the 23rd, or would you prefer the 30th?
I'll press them, yep. I'd like to say I've talked to her three times, and I expect the estimate soon, and I should have it by the 23rd. I'll have something for you.
Okay. Okay, so this will be carried over to the meeting of the 23rd? Okay, financial business, Town Administrator, DPW Director. Oh, Matt Lafferty, okay. Steve. Request budget transfer totaling $5,500 from account 55407611, gas, oil, and fuel to cover this year's fuel deliveries from account 55405156, leave of $1,500, and 5540 and 6-6698, sand, salt, gravel, and pipe for $4,000.
Mr. President, this is another case of shuffling end-of-year funds to cover expected bills or current bills. Due to the tough winter season we had this year, we've gone through a lot of fuel, plowing, sanding, et cetera. We did have some funds left in our sick leave buyback account that we hopefully will use, and we had some sand and salt and gravel money left because we couldn't get salt delivery, and that's what we hope to transfer to our gas and oil, so we'll have gas, oil, and fuel for the rest of the year.
Okay, I'll enter ten a motion.
I move that we authorize transfer of $5,500 to account number 55407611 to cover fuel deliveries from accounts 55405150 to $1,500, and 55406698, $4,000.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve. Okay, Chief Blakey. Request budget transfers total $35,300 to account 1120-7980 from account 330-517 Holiday Police for $14,500. Account 1060-5100, Department Manager, Salary Code Enforcement for $2,800, and account 5130-5102 Staff Salaries, Ask Me Maintenance for $18,000. And this is to cover what, chief?
The $14,500 from the police budget out of the salary account, this was for the parking lot that was paved at the police station. The money was, we initially thought, through the Budget Committee process last year, was going to be put in the paving account or future needs, and that was going to be, to do the parking lot. Apparently, that money was never put there, and the parking lot was done last year, we're just cleaning up, taking care of that, the delinquent bill.
Okay, and the $2,800, is that also for the parking lot?
That $2,800 was from, the administrator got those funds from the budgets that he oversaw.
Okay, so the total cost of the parking lot was $35,300?
No, $35,000 overage. Cost of the parking lot was $35,000 plus something else.
Yeah, was it more than $35,000?
$35,300, I believe, sir.
I thought there was a portion that you had already budgeted.
But this is the portion that wasn't budgeted.
Right.
The entire process was $35,000. What I sought to get from the Budget Committee, which was approved, was $20,000. Mr. Bellucci had done another portion of the parking lot that he felt he had funds for, because apparently the funds were not there for him. Again, this was something that was, I thought, was approved by the Budget Committee last year, and with Mr. Gonso that oversaw this, and it was going to be, the funds were going to be put in there for that.
Mr. President, just for clarification on this, the agenda only listed as account number 1127980, that's actually the unfunded account. I just, we had a phone call on it, that's why I'm letting you know. We neglected to put in the title for that account. It has no bearing on it, the account number's there.
Yep.
It's been properly advertised, but I'm just, just for clarification, that account is one that the treasurer has that she pays out of unfunded.
Okay, and if I recall, the $20,000 was to do, don't be specific, but it was like the front, and then you ended up doing the back half?
Where the public had access, it was a pretty rough condition, and when Mr. Bellucci came over, he checked the whole thing for grade, for water running off this property, and we excavated the whole side, it would be the east side of the building as well, and we did that two-thirds of the lot. There's still one-third that has to be done in the future sometime.
Okay. All right, I'll enter ten a motion.
I move that we authorize a transfer totaling $35,300 to account number 11207980, fiscal year 14, unbudgeted items, to cover an overage for paving the police station parking lot. Do I have to list any things?
As listed.
As indicated in F2.
Second. We have a motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thanks, chief. New business, Town Clerk.
This is the request to approve the internal posting. We've done some, Denise and I have done some job descriptions, trying to make them a little more clearer and more in-depth as to what we're looking for. The funding has been approved for the fiscal year, and that is for the Board of Canvas Clerks to, on handling elections. It's been, it was discussed thoroughly with the Budget Committee and the Council.
Okay, I'll enter ten a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the internal posting of a full-time Board of Canvas Clerk, as described in item G1.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, Treasurer, Internal Posting, request advertising of part-time accounts payable clerk with a job description.
That would be the same, Mr. President. She's asking for the internal posting or advertising, should no one apply from within, because right now we're just going through a shift. I have a person that is retiring on June 30th, the licensing clerk, so we're kind of posting and shifting positions through, we're trying to get them in line, and this one may need to go out to advertise. The funding is there as well.
Okay, I'll enter ten a motion.
I make a motion to approve the internal posting and request for advertising of part-time accounts payable clerk with job description.
Second. We have a motion and second, all those in favor? Motion carries. The Town Administrator, ratification of two-year contract for part-time, non-union municipal court clerk Eugene Gautier.
Mr. President, this position falls under my department as well. It is the part-time, 12 hours a week clerk. Last year, for some reason, he was only given, it's non-union part-time, and he was only given a one-year contract. And speaking with him, he's not much sure beyond a year or so he will be staying before he completely retires, so we didn't see the need to go past two years. The salary in there is only listed for the first year, so that the town administrator, whatever he proposes to do with some of the other contracts, he'll reconsider the salary for the second year. And the contract and the impact statement, which only totals $137 for the year, has been made public per contract position, per charter.
Okay, I'll enter ten a motion.
I move that we ratify a two-year contract for Eugene Gautier, part-time, non-union municipal court clerk.
Have a motion and second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, Councilors Grillick and Bellatiere, improving trash and recycling infrastructure and performance at town parks and beaches.
This is the exciting part.
You're going to get blinded again.
Jay, we almost down one.
You know what, I'm going to, I'll grab the bill seat and make life easier.
I'm taking this personally. Big belly.
All right, so what was handed out is actually two additional slides that go at the end. We didn't have it in time for the packet to be put together, but really just want to take the opportunity to address something that I know for many folks in town continues to be one of these things, that, you know, as Tiverton gains visibility within the broader kind of Newport County, state, region, country, it might seem small in the grand scheme of things, but for anyone who spends any fair amount of time in one of our parks, recreation centers, or beaches, the problem of trash and litter is just becoming more and more of an issue. And so Brett and I wanted to put forth some ideas for how we might want to improve infrastructure here. So, really quick, in summary, you know, Tiverton, thanks to the efforts of a lot of folks, including our recycling committee and landfill committee and others, we've made a lot of decent progress when it comes to increasing our municipal recycling rate, you know, just the last couple of years in terms of tonnage here, you know, just going up from, you know, 1,884 tons in 2011 to almost 2,000 tons in 2013. That's a really fantastic process, progress, rather. However, when you visit any one of our town parks or recreations or beach facilities, you don't really see that playing out, and it kind of contradicts that progress that we've made. Given the fact that I have three young kids who are very active in town sports, I am at our recreation facilities, many of our recreation facilities, more times during the week than I can shake a stick at. And so, I see, coupled with the fact that leagues such as Tiverton Youth Soccer and Tiverton Little League are trying to up the ante, if you will, in putting on more tournaments and bringing in folks from other towns, we have a lot more volume coming through our town recreation areas. We see beaches being used more, so greater volumes of people, plus the fact that everyone's trying to make a little extra money with concessions, we get a lot of waste being generated, and we don't necessarily have what we need in place to handle that. We know that frequency of emptying the bins and barrels is not enough, that's been talked about, that's very much, you know, that's not necessarily pointing the fingers at anyone, it's just a reality here. We really feel that recycling best practices can be achieved with a very modest investment of materials and time, and that sort of investment can pay dividends quite a bit when you talk about the image and enjoyment of our community of Tiverton. Next slide, please. So, I'm going to spend just a couple of minutes kind of explaining how these best practices can be put into fruition using one field in particular, and then we'll kind of quickly go through some of the examples. So, let me kind of orient you and others to what this is. So, this is the current view of town farm, so this is the boys' field, Sylvia Field, and then the lower soccer field is off to the right of the slide. So, anywhere you see a red circle, that's the current location of one of our 50-gallon barrels, right? That's used for trash and pretty much anything else. The green diamonds is a current location for a recycling bin. So, as you see, they are kind of spread out all over the place, not really any too much of a rhyme or reason there. Next slide, please. And here is Daniels Field and La Pointe Field. So this is the girls' softball side up on the, up on the left, and then the lower baseball field on the right. Again, a little bit of hodgepodge here and there, trash barrel, recycling bin. So best practices here are pretty straightforward, and just anecdotally, I've done a lot of work in this area at my employer as we look to turn around recycling practices and make our business more sustainable. And there's really just a couple of rules of thumb that, that make it real easier for folks. And the key is to make it easy and convenient for folks to get rid of their waste in the proper way. So the first best practice is to always place a trash barrel and a recycling bin side by side. So you have a convenient choice, you're making it convenient for the consumer to make the right choice in terms of how to get rid of their waste. You definitely want to be placing both a recycling bin and a trash barrel close to a concession area if, if they are present. And you really want to try to reinforce as much as possible the, the value of disposing waste and recycling in a, in a responsible way with clear and consistent messaging. And of course, we want to be emptying the bins and barrels frequently to avoid, you know, smells and wildlife and all that sort of stuff. So the short-term recommendations here is to leverage some of those great profit-sharing funds that appear to be sitting around collecting dust from the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation that we get each year for our municipal recycling performance. If my research is correct, the current balance is in the neighborhood of forty-seven thousand dollars. And so we want to be able to leverage those funds to invest in some new contemporary visually appealing trash and recycling bins instead of the hodgepodge fifty-gallon barrels and just whatever we could pull together. Such contemporary visually appealing kind of pieces of infrastructure here really go with the image and the character of the town that we're trying to portray, and could really go a long way to help people make the right choice here. We want to also try to reinforce it, positive behavior with a modest investment in signage. The, the sign that's on the cover slide here is actually from our Booger Marsh Rec Center, and that's a fantastic example of what could be used here. And we certainly want to try to increase the frequency for emptying, especially during the busy times of year, which are the spring and the summer months, and then certainly into the fall. Again, many, many more tournaments coming to the recreation centers, obviously much more volume hitting our beaches as well. Next slide, please. So when you put those best practices into play, here's what Town Farm kind of looks like. So you're gonna see more, first of all, you're gonna see a trash bin and a recycling bin paired side by side together, and you're gonna see them located at more kind of strategic locations along the park. And this does not necessarily have to be set in stone, this is just a recommendation. But we certainly have them paired up by the concession stands, both for the baseball field and the soccer field. We also put a pair down by the playground there, there are picnic tables there, lots of trash always accumulating there on the weekends. And then certainly down here on the lower left where the walking track is. Next slide. This is Daniels and La Pointe Field, again, improved recycling and trash bins put together, flanking the dugouts by the concession stands and over in the playground areas as well. I'm gonna move quickly through this, you're gonna kind of get the idea here. So this is the current situation at the Booger Mark Rec Center. Only one recycling bin on that entire property, lots of trash barrels here, there. This place is a mess. This is what it looks like with best practices put in place. This is South Field, so this is behind the fire station on East Road, current. This is what it looks like with best practices. This is Fort Barton, current, Fort Barton with best practices. This is Grinnell's Beach, lot of trash barrels, nothing in the way of recycling. So this is our thoughts on how to redo that. So again, pairing trash with recycling all along the beachfront at existing locations, over by the playground, and certainly by the bathrooms. This is Fogland Beach, there is nothing at Fogland Beach. I was there on Sunday night again, picking up cardboard, picking up a couple of bags of trash that I bring home with. This is out of control. And I think we really need to make an investment in putting some infrastructure here in order to take care of this really important resource. This is just a suggestion, try to equally space trash and recycling bins along both sides, certainly over by the playground and over downward, kind of like the RVs go. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brett to talk a little bit about longer-term recommendations.
So the long-term recommendations, you can see some additionally visually appealing. These are very high-tech solutions to municipal and park waste disposal. They're called the Big Belly Solar Compactors. And they are, you know, fairly self-contained, they have a solar panel on top of the battery pack in it. They have smart technology that lets the DPW know when they're full. They hold about ten times as much trash as a normal fifty-five-gallon drum because it's got an electronic compactor inside of it, which crushes the trash. They have units that compost paper, I mean, it's a, it's a whole new and exciting kind of way of, of doing municipal waste disposal. And these are the, these are the high-tech units, and they're always paired in modules, side by side, one with recyclables and one with, with trash. And they're, I mean, Joan works in the city with me, and Bill is frequent Boston. They just put, I think, three-hundred-and-fifty downtown last year, and they did a hundred more very recently. And they work really well. So the summary that, that I'll take you through is, and this is sort of to synthesize Bill's technical experience and what I observe and what we've experienced recently. The main components to a strategy for both reducing litter and also dealing with the mechanics of it from, from DPW and from the Administrator and whatnot, is a, is a sort of three- or four-pronged approach. Bill talked about access, we have to create additional access points for people to dispose of waste. And the, increasing the opportunity for folks to dispose of it properly is, is even better. Because I think what we've found just from experiences, it goes one way but not the other. If, if you fill a trash barrel, you don't necessarily have the option to fill the recycle with trash. That's, that's not what we want. But what happens is people fill the recycle bin and then the trash gets overflowed, which is also not what we want, but less harmful. Also, we need to create a system of increasing the frequency of which we dispose of. And sort of creating a permanent system, a schedule that we know where all these things are. We've got a map, we understand the, the hot points. And once we, I think Bill and I have talked, once we get, establish actual points, enough disposal points, we'll know how much trash and how much recyclables we're generating. And we can plan with a little bit more precision when we're gonna need to do that and how, how frequently. Increasing awareness is really, I think, the most important thing after we increase the access. If we, if we make sure people know where these are, they need to be visually appealing, they need to be brightly colored, they need to have signs. It really, it sounds silly, but it's, it's, it almost boils down to putting a bin in front of someone so that they can do the right thing. And the increasing disposal options, a little anecdote, I walked down Riverside Drive yesterday, and one of the doggy waste stations was full of trash. So that's another, you know, sort of.
It's very frequent.
Yeah, I imagine so, yeah.
There were requests earlier this spring, you had wanted to put up on the Grinnell's, both the five apartment and here at Paul and Richard Lees.
And that's, that's another sort of, you know, arrow in our quiver, as it were, is partnering with folks like you guys that, that have the experience and the, and the sort of understanding of these dog waste stations and.
People have been putting trash on the courses from one at the old Grinnell's and the gas station. They actually had to put a log on it with just a hole in it because they want.
Yeah.
To lock it home higher than that. So it's, when you took out the, the trash delivery, the house at Grinnell's Beach became the race station.
So it's, it's all of these things kind of put together in a, in a comprehensive way that we have trash, genuine trash, recyclables, anything that's recyclable. And, and things like the dog waste stations, which are convenient for folks who are in a more pedestrian-friendly area. And that kind of all comes together with a cooperative problem-solving, which involves all the players in, in litter disposal in town. You can go ahead, next slide. I've only got two slides. So I put some round numbers together, some, some pretty simple figures, because I figured everybody is interested in, in doing a, a good deed, but there's also a cost involved with it, and everybody wants to know what that is. And so at the very basic level, those really attractive steel coated with thermoplastic rubber with the hoop on it that said recycle and trash that was pictured earlier in Bill's slide, those are about a thousand dollars for the duplex, which is a considerable amount of money, but they do the job really well, and they're attractive, they're locking, they're on a concrete pad typically. You can't mistake that they're trash barrels, but also they're visually very pleasing. And, and any of the heavy-duty units, the plastic, the recycled plastic ones that were featured above it are around the same price. They're about five-hundred to about six-hundred dollars for each barrel. These aren't, you know, plastic garbage cans like you have in your house. They're meant to not be able to be removed, and they take an impact and whatnot. And then we've got the cheapo kind of standalone units, they're about three-hundred dollars. And that's what we, kind of what we have, a recycled fifty-five-gallon drum with a head on top that's got a plastic flap door. And the pet waste stations are about two-fifty to four-hundred dollars, which is about what you, it falls in line with what, what you folks are doing as well. They vary, the signage and the type of container and whatnot. So the Smart Belly units are really, they're the interesting, and the Big Belly units are the interesting component to the, the waste disposal. And they make two. They make one that's non-compacting, and it still has all the smart technology. And they make one that does compact, and obviously you can see the price, seventeen-hundred-and-fifty per non-compacting unit, about three-thousand dollars per the compacting unit. And the duplex, which they recommend one of each, one for recycling, the non-compacting for recycling, the compacting for trash, is, is forty-two-thirty for the unit. That just gives us some baseline to talk about if, that's, that's all I've got, Bill.
Sir, I do have, I do have one question.
Yes.
With, with the numbers that you just put together, roughly what do you think the total project would cost eventually with all of the playground?
I think we could very easily put those, I didn't, we didn't do the math.
I, I think I counted, we were adding about twenty-five new tandem stations. So even if you went with the top of the line, which are those tandem side by side, that's, I mean, it's twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's all at once, doing everything as one fell swoop. But certainly, this is the first step in looking at what, what the needs are out there. Does that sound about right, twenty-five for, I think that's how many?
Below that forty.
Oh, yeah, certainly. And I don't think we're talking about, and I don't want anybody to think that we're suggesting we outfit the town with a bunch of, of these Big Belly units, twenty-five or thirty of them. They're, they're very, they're very good for very specific purposes. And, and otherwise, if it's a place you're going to dump regularly and there's gonna be enough traffic where you can see, it's, it's, it's a very expensive trash can. So if you don't need to use the, the unit. But in a place where maybe we, we don't get to very frequently, or it's remote enough, or it's just not used enough, it may be worthwhile. Or an area that's, I mean, fills up in a day, that's kind of a, a good option as well. Because it would, it would extend the, extend the time at which, the interval in which we would be dumping. So if, if we eventually had something in a pedestrian area that needed to be dumped every couple of days, we now turn that into every week and a half or so. So it's less, you know, infrastructure costs from a manpower and vehicle point of view.
One more question.
Yes.
Do you have a timetable for this, looking to do it this summer?
I, I would like, coming off of this discussion, to ask the Town Administrator to work with the DPW director to try to scope this out and what makes sense. I think it would be great perhaps to try to make some inroads here ahead of the fall. Try to get something at the, maybe by the beaches by the, by the end of the summer, and certainly for the big fall recreation season. Certainly be advantageous.
Yeah, I was asking the questions only because I think we're gonna have to scope it out. I was gonna make a suggestion, Steve, why don't we just put this on the next agenda for the Landfill Committee? I think we should address it. That'll give the input from the DPW, get the input from the landfill, we know how much money we have in the accounts. And we'll know what questions to ask Brett and Bill after that.
Just one thing about the beaches. We've tried to put barrels at the beaches before, and because the beaches aren't populated so much at night, they turned into dump sites. We've taken the barrels off the beaches and gone to a carry-in, carry-out campaign. The beaches aren't perfect, but they're much more littered when we have barrels, if you can believe that.
Yes.
The stuff blows all over the place, the seagulls take it out. And people, now that we have pay-as-you throw, are just gonna pile this stuff there, because it's unguarded.
Yeah, Bill, if I could make a, make a suggestion, why don't you and Brett tell us when you would like to meet with DPW and the Landfill Committee, and we can even invite the Town Administrator, and let's scope it out once and for all, and figure out what, what the issues are.
I'm totally for it, you know, recycling is rubbish control beyond moral reason. It would be the greatest thing on earth if we banged our heads about the beaches.
I, I can tell you, in Little Compton, they do not have barrels. They had them for years, the same issue. Because at night, everybody goes down, they throw their trash in those barrels. By the morning, the beach is just littered with trash. Now there are no barrels, there's still trash, but not like they used to have.
And the hope, the hope, the hope is with a, advanced is not the, the word, but something that is a little bit more engineered than a barrel with a plastic lid on it, that we reduce.